Good, thank you. Good evening, everyone. Good evening to tonight's board meeting. Our apologies. Closed session took a little bit longer than we had anticipated. We'll be better coming back at seven o'clock promptly. Let's call the meeting to order at seven fourteen. Okay, Chancellor Carla Walter, would you like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I'm trying to go through every single person, so if you'd like to do that, we'd love to have you do it.
Okay, sure. Thank you. I'll do that. Waiting for the flag.
There we go.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. All right, Madam Board Clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Oh, let's see, one second. Okay, we have Student Trustee Yaroni.
Here.
Okay, Trustee Withrow.
Here.
Trustee Jenkins.
Here.
Trustee Handy. Trustee Delphine Polk.
Here.
Trustee Bonia.
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Mike here.
Okay, and Trustee Napoli Abella Reese. Yeah. Okay, Madam President, you have Quorum.
Thank you. Let us move on to three point four, the affirmation of support. Would you like to get that on the screen?
Yeah, I'm leaving this one to go connect to the other.
Okay, number one, the board has continued to work on trust in and among our members. Number two, we agree to listen and seek to understand others and opposing viewpoints with the expectation of good intentions and a deep commitment to the district students. Number three, we commit to being prepared for each meeting and to work within our established communication protocols. When we seek additional information, members will review the agenda in advance of each meeting and adhere to Board Policy two, three, four, zero for adding items to the agenda. Number four, we have reviewed the board's Code of Ethics and commit to reviewing it annually at our organizational meeting to remind ourselves of the behavior we are to exhibit and the guidelines we are to follow in our role. Number five, if the Code of Ethics is violated, we commit to follow the process stated in the code and will first address concerns informally to settle disagreements one-on-one between and among members before moving to the formal process. Number six, we agree that from time to time, the chair will remind members of appropriate behavior and may call for a recess or redirect members if they stray from the topic of discussion. Number seven, we collectively recognize that it is within the duties and authority of the chair to render decisions or take actions to keep our meetings on track in adherence to board policy. Number eight, we will strive to fulfill the vision we established for ourselves. And number nine, we will model the behavior we want others to exhibit. Thank you, board members. Let us move on to three point five, report of action in closed items. Vice President Gonzalez, you in?
Thank you very much. Hold on, let me just pull that back up. Madam President, members of the public. At tonight's closed session, the board voted on the following items. Public employee appointment. Under public employment appointment. We voted to approve the proposed settlement agreement for unfair labor practice complaint filed by the PFT. Motion was made by Trustee Withrow, seconded by Trustee Bonia, on vote of seven ayes. Zero noes, zero abstentions, and no absences. We ratified the appointment of Alejandra Tomas as Acting Dean of Academic and Student Affairs, Career and Technical Education in Laney College. At an annual salary of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars, effective February eighteen, twenty twenty-one through April thirty, twenty twenty-one, or until the position is filled on a regular basis. This position reports to the Vice President of Instruction. This again was. Motion was made by Trustee Withrow, seconded by Trustee Bonia on a seven, zero, zero, zero vote, seven ayes. We also approved on the same vote the recommendation to appoint Sylvester Henderson as the Acting Dean of STEAM at the College of Alameda at one hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight sixteen annually, effective March ten, twenty twenty-one through June thirty, twenty twenty-two, or until the position is filled on a regular basis. And that position reports to the Vice President of Instruction. Motion made by Withrow, seconded by Bonia on a unanimous vote. We also approved the recommendation to appoint Rashima Thornton as the Dean of Enrollment Services at Merritt College. Hundred and thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-five dollars annually, effective April thirteen, twenty twenty-one through April twelve, twenty twenty-two. Reporting to the Vice President of Instruction, Withrow made motion, Trustee Bonia seconded on unanimous vote, seven, zero. And the board voted to approve the recommended settlement agreement, case number two, zero, one, nine, one, two, dash, zero, eight, six, five, seven, six, three, forward slash WC, zero, 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 seven, seven, five, motion by Trustee Withrow, seconded by Trustee Jenkins. It was a unanimous vote of approval with no abstentions or absences or opposition. Madam President and members of the public, the board will be returning to closed session after open session. So we are in recess on closed session. We will return to closed session after the open session to try to conclude our business. I think that is all I have to report at the moment. We'll conclude our report after we adjourn closed session later this evening. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you for that. Let's move on to three point six, approval of the agenda. I do have to make a change or an addition. So shall we get a motion and then a second, and then I will bring it up in discussion process-wise? Is that correct?
President Reese, you can just state what the correction to the agenda is, and then that can be considered for approval.
Thank you. So the correction is for item nine point five, so an action item. To add the, the current title is consider approval of the draft chancellor's profile to commence the search for the next chancellor of PCCD. What I'd like to do is add timeline to that. Consider approval of the draft chancellor's profile and timeline to commence the search for the next chancellor of PCCD. And that is what we did the last time this came around with a timeline as well. Okay, you have a motion?
Move approval.
Thank you, Trustee Withrow, second.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Jenkins, discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Okay, Student Trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonia.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
Okay, and Trustee Napoli Abella Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. Let's move on to three point seven, approval of the minutes. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Trustee Withrow, second.
Second.
Thank you, Trustee Jenkins, discussion? If none, roll call, please.
Okay, Student Trustee Yaroni.
Let's see, I'm sorry. The item again?
Minutes from that.
Approve of the minutes, okay.
Minutes.
Thank you.
Okay, Student Trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Okay, Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonia.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you in?
Yes.
And Trustee Napoli Abella Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. Three point eight, Associated Student Government Reports. Do we have any of our student leaders in the room? Love to hear from.
I think we're expecting Liam Zoo.
Yes, let me go to the attendants. Okay, I'm moving him over to panelists now.
All right.
Oh, I was doing what happened is.
Cool. All right. Good evening, President Reese, members of the board, Dr. Walter, and guests. From the students last week, we hosted an open mic on Monday, a student circle on Wednesday, and a shark tank contest on Thursday. We facilitated many opportunities for students to connect with people from all corners of the product community. I also personally interviewed with Dr. Rudd from the Prothessians specifically about what a student would like to see in a new district chancellor. Within ASVCC, we have reviewed our current participation level in shared governance committees. I am proud to say that we have affirmed attendance in seven shared committees and will be appointing four students to committees at our upcoming regular meeting. The BCC Students Women's History Month is on the way with events on every Thursday for the rest of the month. You can look forward to a movie day, a trivia day, and a women's panel hosted by the Women's Leadership Club in collaboration with the Campus Life Office. To update on the ASVCC election, we currently have thirteen candidates overall running for various positions, so as well as several proposed constitutional amendments. We also look to entertain, we also look to entertain a discussion with the associate students at our sister colleges about the reintroduction of the AC Transit referendum to the upcoming ballots. The general student body can view all updated information on the BCC website and look forward to voting in the elections on April thirteenth and fourteenth. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Liam, for that. Let's go to three point nine, Ralta Classified Senate Report. Terrence Fisher, are you in the room?
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
We can.
Fantastic. Good evening, President Reese, members of the Board of Trustees, Chancellor Walters, presidents and guests. Tonight, we have one classified Senate campus report. The report comes from the Berkeley City College Classified Senate. The BCC Classified Senate is working on the overtime stipend issues when compensating classified staff for their participation on various shared governance committees. The BCC Classified Senate is developing an equitable plan, which we brought to the District Classified Senate, the PCS, for consensus. Second item, the Senate still would like to see a return to campus plan and what the expectations would be. On a point of personal privilege, I wanted to take a minute to speak on the matter of classified employees returning to work. With three point six million COVID cases in the state of California and over fifty-four thousand deaths, classifieds are understandably worried about returning to their work sites. The last communication we heard was that. The last communication we heard was that May twenty-ninth is the presumptive date. But that date may be pushed back depending on several factors. One is the statewide tiers, purple, red, et cetera, where every county in California is assigned to a tier based on its positivity rate, adjusted case rate, and health equity metric. Other factors are the county health department and vaccinations. The Peralta Classified Senate supports the district working with the two classified unions to come up with return to work protocols, procedures, and policies, including social distancing, masks, and plastic barriers. Before classifieds return to work. That is the end of the classified reports. I wish to thank you very much for your support of the Peralta Classified Senate.
Thank you, Terrence. Three point ten, district academic senate report.
Good, good evening, President Reese, members of the board. And chancellor and presidents and guests. I'd like to start off with, I'm very happy that we have six new tenured faculty. It's always an exciting, exciting time when we have our faculty who go through that process and have our, have our events. So I'd like to thank Siri for putting on the virtual event and the people that worked with her. It was exciting to see everybody. And so we look forward to our engagements with everybody. As you know, this is about week seven of our, of our spring semester and folks are gearing up for our in-service that will be happening relatively soon. And we're also looking forward to really trying to get all of our classes prepared for summer and for fall. We're all turning them in. We're hoping that we will make a big push in terms of our marketing and so on for, for the fall. Because we know that we haven't been out there as aggressively as we probably need to be. And we're very grateful that we are keeping our FTF the same as this year for next year. So but in order to do that, we need to make, be really, really assertive in terms of how we get our students and to encourage all of our faculty to encourage their students to take classes here in Peralta. Finally, I'd like to comment briefly on another celebration, which is the fact that all four colleges were basically past their accreditation. Each of the visiting teams came here and they didn't only just say that there was, you know, that everything was good, the kind of comments that you heard from the different colleges. At Alameda, they said Alameda was about love. And the Laney, they were talking about the equity, the equity that they're doing on, online. And they were talking about our work with a number of different areas. And I know each of the campuses had that. And I think that's really special when you have your peers come and they like what you do, right? And they're encouraging you with recommendations to do other things, to better yourselves. And every institution really needs to have that, right? I think that I'm anxious to hear more in detail about what the results, the compliance results from the district. I do think that once we get the letter and it details out more in terms of the explanations, whether for the board or for finance, we need to really, really assess and see how we're moving. I think they do acknowledge that we have been moving forward on a bunch of different areas. And so my hope is that we can continue to do so and to have a very, very strong viable future as a, as a district. Because when you get four colleges being celebrated like that, I think it's, it's a monumental reward for all of us. So thank you very much and look forward to the coming months. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald. Thank you very much. Let's go to public communication, three point eleven, Vice President Gonzalez, you in? I will hand it over to you.
Thank you. To the best of my knowledge, we have three people for public comment. Jennifer Shinoski, Stan Wong, and Dante Thornton.
Okay, I'm moving all of those to panelists.
Great. President Shinoski, you are up first and you have three minutes if you can fit it into that time.
I'll do my best, thank you so much. I'd like to start out tonight by congratulating our six newly tenured faculty within the Peralta Community College District. PFT has been a fierce advocate for full-time faculty hires and the protections that come with that full-time status. And we hope that full-time hiring and part-time equity will be prioritized in order to ensure a dedicated, invested faculty as we move forward together. To support that hope and to move us all towards some action, I spent some time today looking at the data regarding our faculty. All of the data that I'm going to talk about tonight comes from the Peralta BI tool, and it was all downloaded today. So if we look at the number of full-time faculty that we had during the spring two thousand and eighteen term, just three years ago, we see a six percent drop in the number of full-time faculty who are working within the district. Merritt College felt the most of this drop with thirteen percent of its full-time workforce retiring or leaving in that same time period. I know that the response by the district and administration will be that we have fewer students, so we can't hire as many faculty. But we haven't changed the number of committees that faculty have to serve on. We haven't changed the responsibilities embedded in AB seventeen twenty-five and the ten plus one, including the accreditation work that we're all celebrating. And we have expanded the number of unfunded mandates that fall squarely on the shoulders of those full-time faculty. Remember, we don't pay part-time faculty to do any of that work. Almost half, forty-eight point six percent of the FTF we have this spring are extra service or part-time faculty. And more than half, fifty-six percent of our spring two thousand and twenty-one classes are taught using extra service or part-time employees. I'd like to remind everyone here of the seventy-five percent rule and our own AP seven two one zero, which states in part, "The district may employ temporary faculty from time to time as required by the interests of the district. Temporary faculty may be employed full-time or part-time. The board delegates authority to the chancellor to determine the extent of the district's need for temporary faculty. Notwithstanding this policy, the district shall comply with its goal under education code regarding the ratio of full-time to part-time faculty to be employed by it and for making progress towards the standard of seventy-five percent of total faculty workload hours taught by full-time faculty."
And second.
Yeah, I just, I'm almost done.
Okay, sounds good.
I, I, little bit more. I urge our administration and our board to not only celebrate the newly tenured faculty tonight, but also to see the need to follow our AP ed code and do what's right to prioritize the hiring of more full-time faculty to ensure our colleges stay, to ensure that our colleges stay strong and supported. The overreliance of a contingent labor force is not in the best interest of our colleges, our students, or our community. Thank you so much and have a great night.
Thank you very much, President Shinoski. And if you can communicate the, your remarks, board clerk, she can forward that to the board as well. I realize there was a lot of dense numbers there, that would be helpful. Stan Wong, you are up. It's wrong?
Yeah, I just wanted, I've, this is the first time I've attended a meeting. I think I may have done something wrong and signed up to speak, and I didn't mean to do that, so sorry.
That's quite all right. Dante Thornton.
Dante was no longer, let me see if he came back. He left a minute ago, one second. Yeah, he's no longer here.
Okay, well. I think we're through public comment then, much faster than the forty-five minutes allocated. President Reese, back to you.
Sounds good. Let's go on to three point twelve, chancellor's reports. Dr. Walters?
Walter. Hi, good evening, President Reese, excuse me. Vice President Gonzalez, you in? Guests, panelists, and colleagues. Thank you for being here this evening. And I just want to say one thing before I ask the presidents to go ahead and talk to us, and that is to congratulate our tenured faculty. It is a monumental milestone. And when we were listening to some of the faculty give their stories about how the tenure occurred for them, it has been a significant journey. So I want to echo the congratulations. And as we normally want to do here, I will have asked the presidents to give brief reports, and then I will come in after, after they are concluded. And so tonight, again, we will start with, let's see, we'll start with Angelica Garcia, Dr. Angelica Garcia, president of Berkeley City College.
Thank you, Dr. Walter.
As usual, you guys, if you would like for me to share the screen with your reports, but please let me know.
Thank you, Maisha, that will not be necessary. The comments for this evening are in addition to that. Good evening, members of the board, fellow colleagues and community members. My oral report comments for this evening are focusing on key areas related to accreditation update, enrollment management, and time permitting, one update on work for associate degree for transfer, an AB that's on the senate floor for that. So the first is that BCC, along with our sister colleges, recently completed our ACCJC comprehensive site visit. Our visit was a resounding success and served as an example of the tireless work and focus to ensure that BCC met all of the standards and eligibility requirements for accreditation. Our team chair, Dr. Keith Curry, shared that the team's appreciation for the hospitality, collegiality, and professionalism they encountered throughout the BCC community was incredibly warm. They noted our BCC pride and the many ways in which faculty, classified professionals, and administrators work to support the mission, vision, and values not only of Berkeley City College, but also of the Peralta Community College District. Our commitment to serving students and the local community came through with our BCC pride. As many of you know, the accreditation process fosters institutional self-reflection. It includes areas for continuous improvement. So while BCC successfully met all of the standards, the team did note two recommendations for improvement. And those recommendations include ongoing work of assessing and disaggregating our outcomes for, for student assessment and program assessment level, and the completion of a formal evaluation of our governance processes. In true Berkeley City College fashion, we will come together as a community to establish a plan for addressing these recommendations over the next few months. I do want to highlight that the college received two recommended commendations for our exemplary work and service to students. The first is related to the college's mission, vision, and values in being student-centered. And the commendation goes to our BCC live chat program, which I'm incredibly proud of because it's staffed by student ambassadors in the Student Activities and Campus Life Department. And you can find this live chat on our main homepage. I like to drop in every now and then just to say hello to students there. The second commendation is also described as meeting the mission, vision, and values by exhibiting the integration of our instructional and student services, our academic pathways and curriculum with student support systems that, that really serve as our exemplary transfer completion outcome. So these two commendations we were incredibly proud of, and more work and information to follow as the weeks progress. We will wait for the final meeting in June as that is the official reports and decision of the commission. The list of colleagues to congratulate is long, but I do want to acknowledge that it was, you know, the many hands make light work. And I'm sure that some of my colleagues might question the light work portion, but they would agree that it was a true community effort. Related to enrollment management, I wanted to respond to the board's comments where you asked last time for just a little bit additional information related to dual enrollment, retention, and completion. So what I want to highlight that for Berkeley City College, our dual enrollment efforts have grown over the past four years, from four sections in the two thousand and eighteen, eighteen year to forty-two sections in the two thousand and twenty-one. This means for us that we have grown from generating eighteen FTEs to one hundred and four FTEs. And compared to the nineteen twenty data, high school students enrolled in sixty-five percent more classes this year than they did last year. And so we are definitely seeing growth in dual enrollment. And in future board meetings, we're going to see our C cap agreements coming for board support and endorsement. Also want to address the question about completion and retention and by disaggregation, how some of our student populations were faring. And so I'm proud to report that BCC experienced an overall average of three percent increase for both retention and completion. Retention went from eighty-one percent to eighty-four, and completion went from sixty-seven to seventy percent. Now, when we compare the fall two thousand and nineteen to fall twenty, this is an important one, African-American students' completion rate increased by seventy, by seven percent, excuse me, seven percent, from fifty-seven percent to sixty-four percent. So we feel incredibly proud for continuing to work on closing those equity gaps. And in the same year, fall nineteen to twenty, Latinx students' completion rate increased by eight percent. Our retention rates are faring strong from seventy-nine point three percent for African-American students, with our highest being eighty-nine point four percent for Asian-Americans. And Latinx are at eighty percent, Pacific Islanders also around eighty percent. And lastly, what I just want to share is that another question that was asked was whether we were seeing a decline of either first gen or students of color. That is not the case. In fact, our, our composition grew for Latinx students from twenty-six point three percent to twenty-seven and have remained readily steady for African-American students. We have seen a growth in female students. So ultimately, the, the big takeaway, and I know I've shared this in several reports, is that we are in fact seeing more students this year, they're just enrolling in fewer courses. And there's a lot of data to support the why. So with that, I just want to close that Berkeley City College continues to be a champion for transfer pathways. And recently, we, I was, had the opportunity to contribute to a press release related to AB nine twenty-eight sponsored by Senator Berman, and that's in relation to the associate degree for transfer. So looking forward to seeing not only Berkeley City College, but the Peralta Community College District coming out in support of those efforts that provide equitable access to the associate degree for transfer and call for the California Community College System, the CSU System, and the UC System to get our act together, to do our work and eliminate the transfer maze for students. And I just want to close again with thanking, or excuse me, congratulating our three newly tenured faculty, Fatima Shaw, Dr. Michael Orkin, and Alejandra Osaguer. Thank you, Dr. Walter, that concludes my comments for this evening.
Okay, great, thank you, Dr. Garcia. We're going to come back for questions, all right? We're going to move on though for the moment to Dr. Nathaniel Jones III, and he'll give us his report for College of Alameda.
Thank you. Maisha, may I have the ability to share a screen, please?
I believe you can as the panelists.
Okay, very good.
You might want to speak just a tad louder, Dr. Jones.
Okay, will do, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, good evening, President Reese, trustees, Chancellor Walter, and guests. It's my pleasure to make the report for the College of Alameda. Like my sister college colleague, I wanted to start with an overview of the accreditation site visit. We had our visiting team here last week, led by Dr. Juliana Barnes. And so we also were found to have fully met all of the accrediting standards. We were praised for the beauty and the quality of our institutional self-evaluation report. The team is recommending accommodation for The team is recommending accommodation for our love, commitment and support of our diverse students aimed at advancing the College of Alameda's mission. We had no recommendations for improvements. I'd like to thank our students, faculty, staff and administrators, and especially our A L O, Dr. Tina Vasconcelas, for their dedication, their hard work reflected in the successful site visit, but also in the high quality of our Iser. Cougar's great job. I am so proud of you for all that you've done and how well you've represented our college to our colleagues. Next, I'd like to provide a brief report on enrollment management. As you can see, in two thousand nineteen twenty, we had a target of two, of three thousand sixteen, sorry, three thousand two hundred and sixty-nine F T S distributed over summer, fall and spring. Two hundred, three hundred and seven, oh, sorry, three hundred and twenty-seven for summer, fourteen seventy-one for fall and spring. In the summer, we had about eleven over our target. In fall, one hundred and forty-nine, we fell short by one hundred and forty-eight F T S. Spring, which was the first term in which we experienced the impacts of the pandemic, we fell short of our target by about two hundred and fifty-two F T S, bringing the total shortfall for our college at about three hundred and ninety. For this academic term, we have three thousand and three as our target. It should be noted that all three terms, summer, fall and spring, have been impacted by the pandemic. For summer, we fell short of our target by eight F T S. Fall, one hundred and ninety-five. And for spring, we are projecting to have a shortfall of one hundred and seventy-six F T S. What you will see is that for fall, last year, we had ninety percent of target, this year eighty-six percent. For spring, we had eighty-three percent of target, this year eighty-seven percent. Those are improvements as compared to last year in many ways. For fall, we weren't in the pandemic, but this fall we were. And yet, the percent of our target achieved was eighty-six as compared to ninety. These results were not by accident. They were the product of intentional, thoughtful enrollment management engagement strategies that we've undertaken as a college. We focused on student centeredness in terms of our services, redesigning our website, launching a call center, targeting our advertising and outreach efforts, as well as establishing a virtual enrollment hub, expanding on student support, twenty-four counseling, twenty-four seven counseling, financial aid chat services, providing resources to students, Chromebooks, calculators and so forth. We've also made very, very significant efforts to grow our dual enrollment programs for the spring, also for next year. We've increased spring intercession and late start classes. And we expect that these efforts will increase our F T S by an additional one hundred and fifty, giving us the shortfall that has been projected. Further, we are increasing our retention efforts through focusing on our specialty program, Accesso Empuente, Veterans Workshop, emoji programs, Welcome Week, as well as Black History Month events and Valentine Day events. Also sponsoring equity program and training for our faculty and staff. Additionally, we are carefully analyzing data and information that came from consultants so that we can refine and launch additional strategies that will garner increases in our enrollment. Further, we are engaging in dialogue and conversation across the college about ways in which we all can meaningfully seek to turn the tide, as it were to speak, in terms of the decline in enrollment. As a matter of fact, today I presented to our chairs data on our enrollment declines and began having a conversation with them on ways in which we can meaningfully seek to address these issues. At our faculty flex on the eighteenth, we'll be making a similar presentation, again, sharing data and looking at what are the key drivers that are influencing our decline in enrollment? Are they internal? Are they external? We will seek to identify root causes and to develop concrete, data-driven strategies to mitigate them. Lastly, I would like to say that I want to congratulate our newly tenured faculty members for achieving a very, very momentous milestone. I would like to congratulate Professor Andrew Park, Richard Kaiser and John Taylor. Congratulations, one and all. Thank you very much for your time this evening. And this concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Jones. Next, we will have Dr. Rudy Vesikoff, President of Laney College.
Good evening, Chancellor, members of the board and colleagues of education. It's great to see everyone this evening. Can you all see my screen okay? Okay, well, while I'm getting settled here, I just want to share one announcement. We're very pleased to announce newly found partnership with National University, formerly J F K University, to offer free mental health services. There will be three interns working at the college, one of whom is bilingual in English and Spanish. So I think this is really an exciting opportunity and partnership as we work to support our students. I wanted to, just like my colleagues, touch on a couple of things tonight. Number one, enrollment, and then number two, our accreditation. So before you, you have our enrollment numbers. And certainly, they tell a difficult story when it comes to this year and the impact of the pandemic. When you think about a number of what they call hard-to-meet online programs, whereas colleges may have three or four disciplines, we've, we've got basically around sixteen of them. And it's, it's really been a challenge. And, and as we've tried to do that and reconcile safety, one of the things we've had to do, and of course, this has impacted our numbers, is have seats with lower class maximums. And just as a point of comparison, whereas a year ago in spring, we opened spring twenty twenty with only three sections capped below twenty. This spring semester, we have twenty sections or seven, basically seven times that with low caps. And certainly, you know, we are trying to navigate and move forward. And we really do look forward to meeting the challenge of bringing some more of our, our classes on campus as conditions permit and gearing up our campus for that, just as we do our summer and fall planning. Two things I would like to highlight, though, our dual enrollment is something that has certainly increased in the last year. And you'll see that we actually have, whereas we had previously offered about fourteen or fifteen sections per semester, we're now offering between twenty-eight and thirty, if you look at our last two semesters. Certainly, this is an opportunity to bring colleges to the high schools and bring, bring them to the students. And it's something where we are leveraging those opportunities and, and remain grateful to our O U S D and charter school partners for that. Also, with March twenty-second around the corner, that's going to be an exciting day at Laney College because we are going to be launching fifty-three late starting sections, which should, I'm projecting, add another five percent toward our enrollment target. These are, as we look at these right now, actually, of the fifty-three, twenty-one are full. And we have several others that are well above the halfway mark in terms of enrollment. Annually, spring late starting courses do seem to be a target for Laney students, something that they, that they want. And that's a need we will certainly continue to meet as we move forward. Also, as we move closer to the twenty-second, we're going to be upping our game with a, a social media campaign promoting our late starting courses. And not just the courses, but the services available to students, whether it be our counseling or, or things such as our laptop distribution or food distribution as well. So really, this is a time to, to move forward and be strong, and it's something we look forward to. And certainly, speaking of things we look forward to, I am so pleased to share our accreditation outcomes with you to this evening. Dr. Pam Luster, who chaired our visiting team, she's president at San Diego Mesa College. In our closing conversation, she said, Rudy, the college has a lot to be proud of. And, you know, talk about telling me something I already knew. I think that was the case. We got three very strong commendations from the visiting team. First, first of all, our COVID response and how we, we've moved and pivoted to support students. And certainly, that is something across our organization where kudos are to be given out, whether it's our many faculty who pivoted to move instruction online or set up protocols and take steps to have a safe on-campus experience. And especially recognizing Director Amy Marshall for her work in making sure that not just the classrooms were safe, but our campus in general was as well. That was something for which we were actually commended. You've heard me in this meeting sing the praises of guided pathways and recognition. Well, we got one more for that, from the visiting team. We were actually commended for our guided pathways work, the fact that it's integrated into our strategic enrollment management plan. Also, our participation in the statewide Program Mapper Project and the, the program maps that we show students and give them the opportunity to backwards plan. And it's something that's great, and it's certainly become an anchor at our college. And then finally, this one's kind of sneaky good. We were commended for our college planning. And if you think about that, that's actually something that's, that's really a commendation for all of our participatory governance work at Laney College, from our senates to our shared governance committees, to our college council, to all of, all that we do when it comes to consultation and really honoring the tenants of shared governance, and something that's important. We did receive recommendations, although I'm happy to say they're recommendations for improvement and not for compliance, meaning that we don't have to submit follow-up reports or anything like that, thankfully. We actually self-identified the areas you see before you, distance education, as well as assessment and program review. Essentially, the visiting team agreed with us that we are on the right track, but that we still have a distance to go when it comes to making improvements within these areas. So I don't want to close tonight by sounding like an acceptance speech at the Oscars. But before you, I think you could see, there are a lot of people at Laney College to thank. Back in fall two thousand nineteen, we used to get together on Friday mornings to work on accreditation. And it was the Coffee and Donut Group. And really, that we, the total number of people who literally put hands and gave input into our self-evaluation report totaled eighty-two. And I certainly miss buying the five dollars Friday morning donut special for the dozen and bringing them for work. Our senates definitely, as we vetted, gave their input and certainly did that. And our, our associated students of Laney College also got compliments from the visiting team for their participation in the visit. I have to say thank you to our college vice presidents who took charge of the standards in terms of providing administrative support. I think especially Vice President Derek Pinto for our resource standard, standard three. And then also Vice President Vicki Ferguson for her work on standard one and also informing a lot of things in student services. From, from the names that you see here, you might see one that's, and that you recognize, Maisha Jamison. Despite her very busy workload at the district and certainly serving as the board clerk, she did make time to help us with our last bits of evidence and also made a guest appearance at one of the accreditation interviews and certainly told the story of the college in very fine fashion. Karen Teligan has been someone who's provided all the support for what we, what we did in our report, whether it be at links or whatever there was. I'm sure, you know, Trustee Reese could probably speak to the value of a current website that's got links. And our Public Information Officer, Lorena Baldazzo, certainly did that. And then finally, the two biggest words of thanks I'd like to give are to our faculty accreditation coordinator, Professor Chris Widenbach, who put in hours and hours of work helping to write our report. And then most recently, our accreditation liaison officer, our Director of Information Technology Services, Rupinder Batia, really was the steadying force who really made our visit go and, and made everything work. And just her previous experience with accreditation really made it clear that she needed to, to lead us as our A L O during this process. So it really was a great visit. It was an all Laney visit and, and something very collaborative. And with that, I'll close my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Vesikoff. And not least at all, we will turn now to Dr. David Johnson, President of Merritt College.
Thank you, Chancellor. I appreciate you. So good evening to our board president, trustees, Peralta employees, students and community members. Just want to thank you for allowing me to share my impressions of the accreditation peer review team, visit and discuss my thoughts regarding the current state and future direction of enrollment management at Merritt College. So last Thursday, the team concluded their evaluation of our institution. And making their appraisal, they considered our Iser, requested and assessed additional evidence, met with faculty, students and administrators and held campus forums. So I am pleased to share with you that the peer review visiting team concluded that Merritt College met every single accreditation standard. And by that, what I mean is that they did not identify a single finding or recommendation for Merritt College, which is amazing, not a single thing. So this is certainly a cause for celebration, but not a call for complacency because we understand that there's more work to be done and we are girding ourselves for what lies ahead. But at the same time, I believe that the visiting team's evaluation of our institution brings one thing into sharper focus, and that is the progress we can make, the heights we can reach when we do it, do the work together as a team. So with that said, I'd like to thank, take a moment to acknowledge and thank everyone for their focus, their hard work, their intelligence, their skill in getting Merritt to this point. I want to say to the administrative team and the faculty and classified accreditation standard leads, thank you for your indispensable contributions. To our A S M C leadership, I want to recognize you for making certain that your voices were heard. I also need to recognize our chancellor, Chancellor Walter, the district administration and staff, and the board of trustees for your collective willingness, particularly the board president, to support Merritt College and provide information and perspective. And finally, I want to thank the members of the accreditation and Iser task force as they were really the ones that did the heavy lifting. Our A L O, Dr. Denise Richardson, Dr. Hillary Altman, the chair of our accreditation committee, Tom Renbacher, Dan Lawson, Stephanie Harding, Tashada Henry, and the author of our report, Mr. Neem Thai. So with that said, I'd like to turn our attention to the matter of enrollment. And I know over the past few meetings, this board has been presented with charts and graphs and statistics, and it's very dizzying. And I didn't want to do a data dump, but I do want to share a couple of things with you. First, that for the spring twenty twenty-one semester, Merritt's resident F T S is one thousand three hundred and sixty-two point nine six, which is roughly eighty-two percent of our target. We have late start classes as well, so we hope to close in on one hundred percent. Can also point out that for the twenty twenty-one academic year, our productivity stands at a little over fourteen and that we stayed within our budget by not exceeding the district F T F allocation. I know that there was a particular question about enrollment for students of color, and the news is sobering. From fall nineteen to fall twenty, enrollment for African American students fell by seventeen percent. For Latinx, it fell by fifteen percent. For Asian Pacific Islanders, it fell by eight percent. For Asian-Pacific Islanders, it fell by 8%. And for white students, it actually increased by 7%. So, I'd rather spend the rest of my time instead of analyzing the data to talk about what we're going to do about it. So broadly speaking, we're planning on focusing on three areas. Number one, improving our marketing efforts, and this includes being more effective at utilizing our website as a recruitment tool. We've already done a complete refresh in terms of aesthetics, but the focus going forward will be on improving functionality and targeted messaging. We're also working to implement, implement a plan to expand our social media presence. And I also believe that employing PIO, albeit a classified position, to work closely with Mark Johnson, our Director of Marketing, Communications, and Public Relations, will also bolster our outreach and recruitment strategies. Number two, we need to simplify the matriculation process. Think in addition to attracting new students to Merit College, we're going to focus on utilizing technology, whether it's online tutorials or software, to facilitate the onboarding, admission, registration, and financial aid processes. We're committed to doing a better job of following up with those who have expressed interest in Merit but didn't apply, have applied but have yet to meet with a counselor, or maybe have met with a counselor but still haven't enrolled. So we want to minimize what I'm calling the slippage and always keep that matriculation momentum moving forward. I think bringing on the dean of enrollment services and bolstering staffing levels and admissions and records and financial aid are critical first steps. And finally, the importance of keeping students here once they're enrolled. Here, our focus will be on providing students with the support and resources they need to be successful. We're going to significantly increase the amount of CARES money that goes directly to our students. We're going to supplement our current SEA, our Student Equity and Achievement Budget, to spend more money on FYE and Puente and Sankofa programs. It's important for us to invest in our faculty in the sense that bringing on new positions in our core academic programs, providing training opportunities that we can honestly say that our instructors are the best prepared in the state, and then also meeting the mental health needs of our students by hiring a full-time faculty member in health, health services. And I think all of these steps will reinforce the, the culture of care for which Merit is known, and this in turn will allow us to attract and retain more of our students. So in closing, we intend to completely revise our strategic enrollment management plan so that it is more reflective of the new educational landscape and thereby more responsive to the needs of our students. And our revised SIM plan and our subsequent efforts are going to be informed by the feedback garnered from the enrollment consultant with whom the district is contracted, as well as the upcoming UCSD Enrollment Academy that all the colleges will be attending. So this concludes my report for the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. And so, President Reese, I'll leave it to you to see if there are questions from the trustees regarding the president's reports, and then I'll circle back with a brief closing remark.
Please, thank you, Chancellor Walter. Trustees, do we have any brief questions so that we can get back to the agenda? Let us know, please, if you have any questions or comments for the amazing presidents. Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
You know, there was so much protein in that dish that was just served us. I don't know how to say anything briefly of substance. So I'll just say, I'm really proud of you all. I'm proud of your staffs, your faculty, and, and, and most particularly, your students. I've got a lot of questions on the success data, on the enrollment data, but this isn't the time or place. I look forward to digging in. And in particular, where we have successes, for me personally, it would be really helpful to understand why we have the successes, not just the numbers, but if we see significant increases in success and retention like at BCC, understanding what's going on there better, I think can only be of value to the whole district and to us as a board. So, anyway, I'm going to stop. Thank you. I look forward to a deeper discussion at some future time.
Trustee Julina Bonilla.
Yes, I will also be brief. I want to echo trustee Gonzalez's sentiments and what he shared. I also just want to take my hat off to the college presidents and each, each and every one of your team members who contributed to such an amazing interaction with the ACCJC, ACCJC team that came out. You know, one of the things that I heard from you all was owning and identifying where your challenges are. And, and that's always the first step in improving your performance and your outcomes. And so when you know where your, where your deficits or where your challenges are, you, you have a light in front of you, you know exactly where you're going, and that's what I heard from all four of you. So I just, I take my hat off to you, to all of you, all four colleges and your teams, just bravo, bravo. This is really good. And I do look forward to deeper discussions as we move into the rest of the year. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bonilla. And I see trustee Withrow's hand up, literal hand up.
My hand electronically is not working. I just want to add that I'm very proud of all four colleges. I think it's fantastic, the achievement under the most dire set of circumstances and environmental set. But again, congratulations. Thank you very much.
Okay, and then I will just make one comment very, very quickly. And I will just say that it is not lost on me that all four colleges did such a monumentally significant job, given the fact, as the report outset, that there are significant problems with standard three and standard four. So, if the four colleges are able to do as amazing a job as you all have been able to do, given the problems with the district, that is not lost on me because that is not insignificant. That is, that is amazing and exciting and, and really rare. And I'll just say hallelujah, and also my hats off to all of you. And I would also like to say thank you, Dr. Johnson, for, for saying that this was incredible and the work continues, right? And often people, after the ACCJC visits are done, we, we become complacent. We can't do that because there's still so much more work to do. So, we, we're here to support you and we're here to do the hard work that we, as the board, have to work on ourselves as well as the district. So thank you all. Okay, Chancellor.
Okay, thank you. Yes, I, I, I do agree that everyone should be feeling very proud about the virtual site visit. And for those people who may not be aware of that, all of these visits were done by Zoom. And so, where, in, in times when we're not in a shelter-in-place pandemic environment, all of these things would be happening with people having collegial meetings, and there would be food and all sorts of things. But all of these meetings took place seemingly around the clock, you know, during those four days. So very good, very wonderful job. And President Reese mentioned a couple of issues around the district and the, well, standard three and standard four, which is governance. So we'll be working on those. I just want to also outline a couple of, you know, sort of sketch points for you, so you'll know what to expect. We will hear back from the visiting team via the decision or the outcome from the commission meeting, which is happening middle of June or so. So we should hear the status of the district of the colleges. No, you know, somewhere between the end of June and the middle of July. So, so you can be expecting that. And it's just a regular, that's the regular process, and that's where we are, and we're in it. So, very good work. And I want to also thank everyone again for all that they did in helping us to get to this point, which is an amazing point. So, the only other couple of comments I have to say are about the return to work plans. We are working on those, and thank you so much, Terrence Fisher, for bringing that out. We are working on those. We were talking about that yesterday again, and we're going to be bringing forward the plans, and we're going to be working to make sure we have all of the adequate materials to, to do that. And so, that's, that's forthcoming. And we are also going to be letting people know what we consider to be our modalities for instruction for the summer and fall here pretty soon, probably tomorrow. And I really do want to thank the board as well for all that they've done to help bring us to this point. We are in, we are still in COVID-19 shelter-in-place pandemic, and we're all doing an excellent job, given the constraints that we're in. So, once again, thank you. Thank everyone for all of your efforts, and back to you, President Reese.
Sorry about that. All right, thank you for that. Let us move on to the, let's proceed to the consent calendar. If we could go to the consent calendar, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Second was?
Yuan.
Oh, okay, thank you. So trustee Bonilla first and Gonzalez you win. Second, roll call, please.
Madam President?
Yes, my apologies, discussion. Did you have something that you?
I'd like to pull for action, discussion, 6.1, 7.2, and 7.3.
Okay, 6.1, 7.2, and 7.3. Okay, I just want to put that online too as well. All right. Okay, roll call.
President Reese, I think you need the maker and seconder to agree with that as a friendly amendment, and
Yes.
I do.
Yes. So I will accept and move that item. Trustee Gonzalez?
I, I accept that amendment.
Thank you.
Thank you both. Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy. Trustee Handy?
I need clarification. Are we only doing on seven? Have we skipped over 6.1, 6.4?
We're pulling, we've just pulled trustee Handy's 6.1, 7.2, and 7.3. Was there something you also?
6.4. And I'm just, I'm trying to go through this real quick. Okay, you said 6.2, you already have?
Yeah, 6.1.
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm pushing these, they're lighting up. Okay, 6.1 you have.
7.2, 7.3.
Okay, 5.1.
5.1.
Okay, and I'm, I'm just, I'm just going through this real quickly. I think that was the last one. Yes. So, yeah, and you already have 7.3.
Let us just reread them again, and then I think we'll need to do another friendly amendment application potentially. So 5.1, 6.1, 7.2, 7.3, four agenda items taken out of consent. Is that correct for both my?
That was five, 7.2, 7.3, 6.1, 6.4, and 5.1.
Okay, I did forget 6.4. So 6.4. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. My first and second?
Oh, wait a minute, okay. I, I think I might be able to remove one. Okay, I, I will, let's go ahead.
With those five?
Yeah, with the those five, I think there's one that I want to remove. I'll send you a text. I'll send you in there. The one that if I pulled it out and I want to remove it, I'll just send it.
How about we just, we just pull them out, and then when we get to that point, if it's a non-issue?
Thank you.
Okay, so our, our original motion makers?
Yes, that's fine.
That's fine, and I think now we need to vote over.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Okay, student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez, you win.
Yes.
And trustee Napoli Bellarice.
Yes.
Okay, a motion passes.
Thank you. So let's move to 5.1. Is that correct? Consider ratification of monthly contract report in accordance with administrative policy. So trustee Handy, I believe that that is your, your extraction from the consent calendar?
I, I was really confused when I looked at this because I'm looking at so many expensive consultant contracts and why those jobs aren't covered internally. So for the ISIS reports, I'm looking at, wait, wait, I'm looking at 50,000 total for Merit for the, the writing of the report. And then, yes, 4,000 for someone to edit, 45,000 for a consultant focused on the development of the Iser. But I thought that we also had, I thought we had hired someone that was working with all four colleges on all of their accreditation reports. So this is on top of that one. And on, and for Alameda, I was looking at, there were three consultant costs that came up to about 44K. And it says, provide career coaching and case management. And I'm not understanding what that is, and what department that comes under, and why that is not an internal position.
Point of order.
President, point of order. I believe in order to have discussion on the item, we need a motion and a second, and I'm prepared to make that motion.
Oh, my apologies. You are absolutely correct. So thank you, trustee you win, Gonzalez you win. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you. Now we are in discussion. Through the chancellor, the question of trustee Handy, maybe to your?
I guess I'm wondering, so this item is the ratification of contracts that have been let between February 11th and February 24th in accordance with the policy of ratification of contracts. So what I guess I would like to have is clarification on what the question is.
My question is, what, do we not, did we not hire someone to work with all four colleges? And, and someone who was previously a consultant, and then we hired her, and then we have this on top of that. So I'm trying to understand how we get an additional $50,000 at Merit College. We have a 45,000 for consultant services coordinator. But, and this is directly related to the ISers, and then we have 4,000 someone, for someone to edit. It's not the work, whether the work was good or not. If, my question is, why do we have, we have all of these consultants outside of that when I thought the purpose of us hiring the person that was a consultant before was to provide that support? And is this something across the board that all the colleges do? Because that kind of caught me off guard. That's the first one. That was Merit College. And the second is I don't understand what the consult, the career coaching and case management and who that's for. That's the 44 or so K. My computer won't let me have my notes and this page up at the same time, but you can add the amounts there. So those were the two questions of the two colleges.
So I'll ask Dr. Johnson to speak to his accreditation process and what he would like to share on that point.
Thank you, Chancellor. So trustee Handy, to my, Stephanie Harding was our consultant. She started assisting in the process, actually, late last year. And there was a, a, a time limit in terms of when her contract ended, so we just, this was just a, a request to extend it. To my knowledge, we didn't, we didn't, at Merit College, we didn't work with any consultant from the district office to help us do any of the research or writing or organizing. We envisioned, just a little institutional memory, you may remember this, we, we used Ms. Harding in the same role that Audrey Trotter played in, in the past. But, but it was just internal to Merit. We didn't partner with anyone with a district consultant or anything. Oh, I think you're.
I think you're.
That, that might be my mistake. Maybe, did we, I don't know, okay, my.
That, that might be my mistake. Maybe, did we, I don't know. Okay, my computer's echoing. Did we or did we not hire the consultant that we had before last year for, I believe, 125K to support the continuity of the reports for the colleges? Can some of my colleagues, am I mistaken on this?
Um, I think that uh, vice, vice chancellor Brown can speak to that.
Uh, greetings trustee Handy. Um, you are mistaken on that. Um, the consultant that you're, you're referring to uh, was hired um, to help with the district portion of the ICER, um, but not in coordination in the way you're talking about and in the way that she did uh, in prior years.
Wow. So we, before we did it on a consultant basis, but then we actually hired in staff full salary and it was only for the district office and not for the four colleges.
I think that's a good summary. Yeah.
Whoa, okay. That answers that question. Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
Okay, good. So is there another piece to your question now?
Um, um, Dr. Jones, I believe has an answer for me regarding um, career coaching and case management. Yes.
Okay, perfect. Dr. Jones?
Okay, um, I don't believe that had anything to do with the um, with the ICER at all. Um, I believe that that was specifically working with um, dislocated um, workers as part of our career center um, efforts that we were, were doing. I can get more details, but that's my understanding of um, that contract. It had to do more with our career center and um, and not with um, with the ICER. It's to help um, dislocated um, workers. And it was um, part of um, a, a grant funded initiative. Uh, and it was not um, you know, um, general funds from the college. So it was um, grant proceeds. Um, by the county of um, Alameda County.
Okay, that makes sense. I just didn't, uh, because it doesn't say the, the, the grant funds, or maybe that's what Fund 11 is. But I still didn't understand who was being career coached, if that was staff or, and the, um, and the case management. So thank you for explaining that to me.
Community.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, let us move on to six point one. Can I have a motion?
Through the chair. Can we go ahead and vote on this if there's no more discussion?
Yes.
Absolutely. Please, Maisha, save me.
Yeah. Student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U N.
Yes.
Okay, and trustee Napoli of Bella Reese.
Yes.
Okay, the motion passes, five point one.
Thank you. Now let's try this again. Six point one, can I have a motion for six point one? Consider approval of tenure recommendation.
So moved.
Thank you. Discussion?
I'm sorry, who seconded that? I have one.
You can either use me as the motion maker or a seconder, whichever works.
Okay, I got um, trustee Bonilla first. I'll have you as a seconder.
Thank you.
Trustee Withrow?
Yeah, I pulled this item. Um, and I recognize that uh, our role in life here, uh, the overall mission, whatever is education and that the faculty are the heart of the educational process and that we, um, they're the strength that we have. I think without taking time and whatever of going into, I think all of us have gotten feedback from various segments, uh, whether it's in the public or from advanced uh, four-year universities that our faculty are very effective. Now, having said that, six point one is talking about um, recommending uh, tenure appointments. And um, we're in a, an exceedingly difficult period here in terms of finances. And when you're talking of um, full-time tenured faculty, you're talking fixed costs. And uh, it would seem to me that we need to look at the, a five-year program and budget and determine what we're going to have in terms of a size of a structure that fits. Um, I'm very concerned about enrollment. I know people are working very difficult, doing creative things and whatever, but uh, just an awful lot of what I'm reading uh, would indicate that um, post-secondary education is going to be down for some time across the board. And so it, I would hope that when we look at where we're going and how we're going to do it, uh, we determine the number of faculty, the full-time faculty that we need and can use and and maintain our um, productivity figures at the same token, at the same token. We need to look at the administrative staff and determine what kind of administrative staff can we have? Are we gonna, as we have done sometimes in the past, have a role filled by one person for two colleges, if it's that kind of a skill set? But it seems to me we need to do that before we go trotting down the road uh, saying we're going to promote all of the um, very fine faculty that we have into fixed, fixed costs. And that's all I have.
Thank you, trustee Withrow. Trustee Gonzalez U N?
Thank you. Um, I want to just express my congratulations to our extraordinary faculty. And the processes that brought those faculty members to us from being hired to the extremely diligent review process, um, feedback, continual improvement. I think we have a pretty incredible place. And uh, so thank you faculty. And thank you for all of you who have participated in the process of uh, helping these fine faculty members get to uh, this um, important life accomplishment and important accomplishment for our district. Thank you.
trustee Handy? trustee Andy?
Sorry, this tech, this technology that we have is, makes it difficult to unstick the keys. Um, I, I share the same concerns as trustee Withrow. I share concerns about um, hiring of new faculty when we barely have students. I have um, I, you know, I'm excited for people to get, get tenure. You know, they work hard at that. We understand that. But the question, not being faculty, which is, we're trustees. The question that I had, and I think he had as well, is was that process, was it necessary for that process to happen right now? Rather than later, at the end of the year perhaps, when we start coming out of this decline and possibly start building up more students? Because we're in the, we will have to lay people off. There's no way around it. This is coming. And so I don't think that the two are necess, I mean, valuing our faculty, that's one thing. But our responsibility is fiduciary. And for us to, we need to know what we're working with. And this, as, as trustee Withrow said, it is a fixed cost. But let's not confuse this with the fact that we have great faculty members. We don't pay as much as other colleges and they choose to be with us. That's all great. But if we don't look at the finances and are not clear on what we can and cannot afford, then that's magical thinking and that will get us right into trouble with accreditation as well. So I don't think it's unrealistic for us to have that information and also for all of us to be on the same page in, in terms of knowing what our operational budget is going to be. Because finding out we're over allocated in so many things later is a little bit too late. And right now, we're, you know, we're, every, everyone's singing rosy praises, but this is not a rosy praise time right now for Peralta. We have a lot of challenges that we have to work through. So that's the end of my thoughts on that.
Thank you for that. Um, and you know, and I, and I hear uh, both of what you were saying trustee Withrow and trustee Handy, for sure. We are in a difficult time, declining enrollments, financial situation. The horizon is uncertain for, for uh, community colleges in particular, higher education in general, but community colleges in particular. And, and as you two have already said, as well as trustee Gonzalez U N, it is, the tenure process is part of a process. Um, so we're not hiring anybody new. This is part of it. It's part of that, that process. What we hope for is that our concentrated efforts, obviously in marketing and a variety of different mechanisms that are going to have to be implemented will help impact and influence our enrollment management. But the tenure process is already kind of in, in the queue. Whatever happens as a result of our financial situation going forward is going to have, is going to affect what it's going to affect in terms of faculty classified administrators all around. Um, but today is a cause for celebration. We, we attended the reception before. So I think the reality is in front of all of us and we're, we're absolutely well aware of that. We are not hiring new people from outside. This is part of a process of four years, as Dr. Brown had said. And, and let's, you know, let's uh, most certainly celebrate the moment. But our eyes are wide open. And as, like I said, I hear you trustee Handy, I hear you trustee Withrow. Um, and, and as we get to that particular point, we will, we will.
Well, I understand. We are celebrating, celebrating them as well. But our job is fiduciary. Our job is to ask these questions and have these answers. Thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Shall we vote on this at this point? Since we have no other discussions in the queue or comments in the queue, let us vote on this. Roll call please.
Okay, for item six point one, student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez U N.
Yes.
Okay, and trustee, um, Napoli of Bella Reese.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, my, motion six, um, motion passes for six point one.
Great. Thank you. Let us move to six point four. Consider approval of contract education agreement between Nanjing TJYX and COA via international education and the amount of 138,297.
No, I pulled, I pulled that, but um, I, I now understand, the way it was written, it looked like we were paying money. I got the clarification that I needed. They are paying for those services for us. And that was the question that I had for that. So it's an exciting opportunity.
Okay, since we pulled this uh, in terms of process all, since we pulled this, um, and there is no discussion on it, need we vote on it? Yes, right? Because it's no longer on the consent calendar, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so uh, mo- motion by trustee Withrow, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Okay, trustee Handy?
Do you, I'm sorry, can you make sure that we know what we're voting on? Thank you.
That, yes, we are on six point four, which was pulled from the consent calendar. Um, no discussion on it from the person who pulled, from trustee Handy who pulled it. So now we've just first and seconded it. Now we are, I believe, in the roll call period for six point four.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla, um, trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
That's right. Um, trustee Gonzalez U N.
Yes.
And trust, trustee Napoli of Bella Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes for six point four.
Thank you. Um, let's go to seven point two. May I have a motion for that?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion? The trustee Withrow and trustee Handy?
I'd like to have uh, somebody from the staff, vice chancellor for finance or whomever, uh, speak to this. You know, we're talking about the um, consider approval of the 2021 GAN appropriation limit. I'm not sure how many members of this board really understand what they're talking about when they say that. I don't. So could we have somebody um, speak to us about um, what this, what this is all about?
Yes, I'm going to ask um, interim vice chancellor Ahmed to talk to us about the GAN appropriations limit and what is happening here.
Good evening trustees, colleagues, chancellors. So let me explain uh, the GAN limit. The GAN limit, the top portion is the calculation of our appropriation limit. What that mean is that when you look at the bottom is what you're getting from the state, what the state is funding you. The state is funding you for 109 million dollars, state apportionment, property taxes and parcel, and parcel tax. So because our apportionment appropriation limit is decreasing due to decline enrollment, we cannot spend 109 million unless we ask the state to increase our appropriation limit. In the past, the state would not reinforce this. They just started this uh, fiscal year. Cause I get a call from the chancellor office saying, hey, ideally you need to do this. And I said, we never had to do this. They said, we are reinforcing now. This is required by the state. If you, you guys doesn't do that, you have to go to the board. Then you can't spend 109 million. So we're going to increase your appropriation limit, even though you're declining in your appropriation limit, we're going to make it 109. That's the reason I came to the boards, so I can request the approval, so I can send a letter to the state saying, yes, you can now, our board approved, you can increase our um, appropriation limit from 98 to 109. So we can spend the 109. If we don't do that, then we cannot spend the 109. We can spend only 98 million.
Okay.
Uh, you know, and I, and I will also maybe add to that, that it's become a, it is now perfunctory, it's a process, it's a worksheet. It is something that is required by the chancellor's office. If we do not approve this as a board, correct me if I'm wrong, um, vice chancellor deal. We have, it has to go through the board for approval, but it is what the chancellor's office requires us to do.
You're absolutely right, President Reese. Uh, if we don't do that, we cannot spend the money. We have to return it back. So we have to, we had to do that. We have to do that. Cause in the past, they didn't require us to do this because they said, you know what, we didn't reinforce this requirement. Now we go through this. If we are above the appropriate, that what the state is giving us, then we don't need to go through the board. We don't need to request uh, to increase our uh, appropriation limit. The appropriation limit is your, is, is your power of uh, expenditures. So we need to do that in, 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 you know, so we can spend this money. And we're going to send it to the state. You don't have to pay anything. It's just they're going to increase our appropriation limit.
Well, the bottom line there is that uh, the state's going to give us 7 million more once we pass this uh, thing.
They already gave you 109. So because they calculated your power, uh, your power or your expenses' power, since you're declining in enrollment, our appropriation limit is 98 million. And the state is giving you 109. The state is saying, okay, we're going to give you the 109. We already gave you 109. But you can't spend it unless your board approved this. So we can increase your appropriation limit from 98 million to 109. That's what it is for.
Okay. Would take um, a whole lot to vote against getting extra money. But uh, whatever, I mean, it, it, to me, this doesn't make a whole lot of sense. But i- if it's a bureaucratic thing and we're going to get 9 million, let's do it. But i- if it's a bureaucratic thing and we're gonna get nine million, uh, let's do it.
Maybe another way to ask the question, vice chancellor Adele or through the chancellor is, if we do not approve this, what happens? And are there strings attached to the way that that X amount of money needs to be spent?
If we, if, if the board doesn't approve that, we have no, we cannot spend the one oh nine because you have to pay it back. Because your appropriation limit is only ninety eight million, they will say, we give you one oh nine. You didn't have the power to spend it because you were under and you didn't have any authorization from the state to spend the one oh nine. Therefore, we have to return the money back. So we need to approve this in order to spend the one oh nine million.
Excellent, thank you. Trustee handy and trustee Gonzalez you win. Trustee Andy, did you have a question? Your hand is up.
I think, I think her hand was up before.
Trustee Gonzalez you win.
Thank you. Um, just for, in terms of protocol, it seems to me this is a, this would have been an appropriate question. Given that this is a highly technical question, unless the, unless the questioner wants to edify the board as an entirety and believes that this minutia of law is critical to the board's understanding of our function. I, it seems as though this kind of discussion probably doesn't need to happen. Now, it, it could be this was something that was just critical for board members to understand. But otherwise, I might suggest that this kind of question could be directed to the chancellor to get explanation from staff in advance of a meeting. But I'm perfectly happy to move to a vote at any moment. Thank you.
Shall we move to a vote? I see no other questions. Thank you for that question, though, trustee withrow. I think it's important for us to know what it is we're voting on, so thank you for that. Let us, let us vote. Roll call, please.
This is for item seven point two. Student trustee, right? Student trustee Yerone.
Yes.
Trustee withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonia.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez you win.
Yes.
And trustee Napoli of Bella Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes for seven point two.
Thank you. Let's move to seven point three. Do I have a mission for seven point three? Motion for seven.
Move approval.
Thank you, trustee handy, second.
Second.
Second, trustee Jenkins, discussion.
Okay, this, um, this is on the, um, the expenditure account. So my question in reading through this is why, um, is, well, okay, looking at the resolution, it says, where is a community college district, county, office of education, school district or charter school should have the sole authority to determine how the monies received from the education protection account are spent in the school or schools with it, within its jurisdiction. But we haven't had that discussion. Maybe that discussion was made some years ago. So today it's automatically, we're saying that the money is going into instruction, but we're not saying specifically how. And I think, one, we need to revisit that discussion because how that money goes into instruction is, I think, is very important right now because we have targeted groups of people that we are losing, who need more creative type of support to, to get them to come back. So my question is, why, um, is not that, why this not going on to students or direct services? Why is there just an assumption that because we've done it before, that we're gonna continue to do that? And can we have a discussion on, um, what we feel needs, is really important and need, that these funds need to be used for, rather than it just kind of go out there and here's the money and it says for benefits and what else did it say? Well, you all have it there. So that was, that was my question.
Chancellor.
Thank you. Again, I'm gonna call on interim vice chancellor Ahmed to speak to this.
Just to say this, this has been in place since two thousand eight. This is specifically is to be used for the instructor in the classroom. Nothing more, nothing less. We have to spend on their salary and benefit. That's what the law, the requirements say and the what, what that, that it says. And we have to justify for the auditors when they come. We have a project number, how we use that money. If we use it for something else, you can have a huge funding for the state. This, the state is saying this fund, which is the EPA, should be used only for instructor, teaching, teachers in the classroom. We cannot use this fund for something else. Or we're gonna have a huge funding with the, with the, with the auditors and those will go to the state. So I've been to the community college for over eighteen years. The EPA is always used like the, the, the requirements say is for the instructors. We paying fifty million dollars in Peralta for instructors, teaching in the classroom. Seventeen million of, of EPA go through salary and benefit. It has always been like this and that was the state require. We cannot use it for a student, uh, for the class, oh, I mean, for the student, for direct services. We use it for teachers, teaching in the classroom.
Thank you for that, vice chancellor Ahmed. Trustee withrow.
Well, I think it's been clarified a little bit here, but in reading it.
Didn't answer my question at all.
Yeah, in, in reading it, um, it indicates that you cannot use it for administration or clerical. And, um, my question, just in simple sense was, can we use it for counseling and, um, for academic coaching? Where we have a significant shortfall throughout, uh, the whole educational process, not just Peralta, but, for the vice chancellor, can we use it for that?
No, sir, no, trustee withrow, with all respect, with all due respect. We only, is only dedicated and, uh, by the requirement from the state is only for the teacher, teaching in the classroom. And no for non-instructional.
Okay, fine, thank you.
Wait a minute, okay, I'm, I'm not, I'm raising my hand again.
Trustee Andy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I can't get this computer to work. Um, it says, I mean, the line that I read to you is a line from the resolution. And it says that the individual college will determine how the monies are received. And it is for instruction. And my, my question is the same as trustee withrows. Can we look at where our challenges are, especially because of COVID and the, and the, and the students that we're losing because they don't do well with online learning? Could we actually target that towards instruction in a targeted area that fits the immediate needs that we have? Not just doing it and just, it's out there and it goes wherever. But right now, we have some other needs. This is seventeen million dollars. And because it says that we will determine how the monies received from that are spent within the schools, I'm hearing some conflicting information. What I'm hearing from you and what I'm reading is this, I'm not proposing that we take this money and put it anywhere else. I'm saying that we look at the opportunity to support serious gaps that have been created that are causing us to lose students and not just do what we've always done because that's the way we've always done it. And if this is something that has to be determined from the board, the board has to have it on a, in a discussion at some point, even though it's, it's been done this way for ten years. It has to be a discussion where they update. They may say, we're gonna continue in the same manner. But it still has to be reviewed because according to what we're reading, there are options in how you're going to do that. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear in what I'm trying to say here.
Chancellor, uh, would you like to respond? And, and maybe for purposes of clarification, it might be good to, to possibly come back. Um, if we decide to come back with the ways in which other community colleges are using the EPA funds um, in terms of planning and expenditures. But I, I will throw it back at you, chancellor, and you can respond.
Sure, thank you. So we brought this, this was from, carried over from the last board meeting. And, um, I think the vice chancellor, the interim vice chancellor has been pretty clear about what the funds can be used for and they are used for instruction. And if the question has to do with the allocation of the funds to the colleges, perhaps that is a question that we can answer, which is really based on the budget allocation model that we have. And so the colleges receive the funds sort of off the top. We are still with the current budget allocation model, it has not changed. We are working on revising it. But I will ask once again for interim vice chancellor Ahmed to let us know what the phrase might refer to when it says it will be at the college level that this will be decided. I think that that's a point of question that she's trying to understand.
I believe that, uh, the question of trustee handy is that it's at the board to decide for instructional, in the classroom, how we go for each college. But we cannot deviate for not putting that money in instructional in the classroom. We cannot deviate. And tonight you're gonna have the auditors and you can ask your question to the auditors. That what I know, we cannot deviate and it's gonna be a finding. We cannot use these funds for non-instructional. When I say non-instructional, I mean classified administrators, counselors, nursing, who is not teaching. Is only this fund is dedicated for teaching by the state. Yeah, but that's the provision, proposition fifty five. Prior to that, we had the proposition twenty and thirty, it was the same thing. And the proposition thirty, what ended in two thousand twelve. In two thousand twelve, we had the proposition fifty five. So if you, um, and trustee handy need more explanations and if what I'm giving her is not satisfied, the auditor will be tonight and you may ask that question too. So what I believe this fund should be used for instructional in the classroom.
So what I'm hearing, um, vice chancellor Ahmed, as well as chancellor Walter, is that from, from the district, it will be sent to the college presidents. And the college presidents will determine the instructional activities. It will be the college presidents that will be determining how they will be implemented, allocated and used within the parameters of, of the EPA. So, so the way the, I, I, I believe that, again, let me know if I'm interpreting this incorrectly. I just want to make sure that we're all clear. The college presidents would have the autonomy, have the ability to be able to decide where and how it will be spent and they will define instructional activities. But it will be within the parameters of EPA.
Correct.
Okay. I, I think that that gives me more reassurance. How, how are we doing? Okay?
Seems pretty clear to me.
Okay.
I'm happy to move into a vote.
Thank you, thank you. Delphine Polk. All right, as, do I have a second for the vote? Or let's just go to the vote. I'm confused now, let's just go to the vote. Roll call, please, Mahisha.
Thank you.
Student trustee Yerone.
Yes.
Trustee withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonia.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez you win.
Yes.
Okay, and trustee Napoli of Bella Reese.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes for seven point three.
Thank you for that. Let's go to nine point one. Uh, we are in action items now. Nine point one is consider acceptance of the Peralta Community College District's June thirty, twenty twenty audit, annual audit reports.
Go on.
Thank you, trustee withrow, second. I need a second.
Second.
Second, trustee handy. Discussion, presentation.
Um, if, uh, we, we have our audit team here.
Thank you.
Who is here to, uh, from CLA. Hello, David Robidek, he's here from CLA and he has been, um, with us. We began with the firm, uh, we got sort of a late start, I believe it was May. So he's worked with, uh, staff here and across the district to help us with our audit. We're very grateful for your firm and what you've done. And so is any of your colleagues with you?
Just myself this evening.
All right. So, um, president Reese and interim vice chancellor Ahmed, if it's okay, we might have the auditor walk us through the process, what they audited, the findings, and then we can come back for questions. Is, is that your pleasure? Okay, very good. All right, over to you.
Yeah, thank you. My understanding is we've allotted roughly fifteen minutes for this, which will include, um, any questions you might have. So, um, I'll try to keep it brief, hit the, hit the highlights. Um, but certainly, at any point in time, any trustee can stop and ask on the way, uh, any questions you might have or clarifications you might need. Um, but my, my guess is, probably not your first external audit report. Um, and, and quite frankly, this is a report on the June thirtieth, two thousand twenty period, um, which is, is just quite some time ago now. Um, we are with, we, submissions were in accordance with chancellor's office deadlines. So we don't have any issues there. However, you know, obviously this is March, these are results as of June. I don't know how exciting those results are. You're probably in more real time financial information as we speak. So, um, but, but as, as, um, as the chancellor mentioned, this was our first year as, as the audit firm. And, uh, we, we appreciate, uh, governance for selecting us. We appreciate management's collaboration in this process. You know, uh, um, you know, we've, we, you know, we, we, a first year audit in the midst of our healthcare crisis, our pandemic, whatever terminology you'd like to use in that is, is certainly, um, adds, adds some, um, some nuance, if you will, to, to what is otherwise a, for the most part, a scientific process, if you will. Um, and so we appreciate everyone's effort in this first year. The, the document itself, which I believe was distributed to trustees, uh, is a long document. There are various components in it, but, but what's most important for the trustees to, to probably, probably hear from, from us today is that, you know, the audit opinion is clean. If you were in the document and you were to turn, uh, to page four through, uh, six, you would find a clean opinion. And that means the financial statements that are, that reside in this document, which are management's responsibility are, uh, are materially, materially accurate. And just past the opinion page, which is the only part of the report that CLA or Clifton Arsenal owns, the rest of it is the districts. You know, right behind that three page opinion is management's discussion analysis. Um, and what's nice about a governmental report, particularly a community college report, is that, uh, management gets to provide their context around the financial results, the financial position, the balance sheet. And so it's, it's a really good document, um, for someone that, that wants to understand the highlights for the year. Um, I won't spend a lot of time on the results again. You know, these are, these are several months ago. I think you've probably seen financial results since then. But, but the M D N A is where you'd find commentary on that. If you were to, to, to page two, uh, to turn to page ten, you'd, you'd find, um, you'd find the balance sheet for the district. And for those that are interested in, um, you know, much of the reporting that the district does throughout the year is, is on what we call a modified accrual basis, you know, kind of a statutory basis. Chancellor's, chancellor's office based reporting by fund. Uh, once a year, though, um, the accounting. Uh once a year, though, um the accounting powers tell us that we are required to 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 present a full accrual basis financial statement, um which includes capital assets um and all the other various balance sheet items, pension liabilities, OPEB liabilities, all things that we track all year. But but it's isn't until the year-end audit where we pull together that in one comprehensive statement, and that's what you find on page ten. And so just just a real highlight, um you'll see that total assets increased one hundred and three million, which is good news. Um but total liabilities increased one hundred and eighty-four million, which 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 means that there the district's net position or kind of accumulated um revenues over or revenues under expenses, you know, decreased about eighty million. Um and on the following page, you you'll see um about the two pages later, you'll see that the results of the operating activities and operating revenues um for the district. So I'm assuming um as we have fifteen minutes allotted, we won't spend much more time than pointing out that in terms of financial results, but a a key component to our work is and much time is spent on is compliance. You know, we just had a a discussion uh about the GAN limit, EPA funds, and tho- those are all state compliance requirements that we audit. You know, as part of our engagement with the district. And if you were to turn all the way to page to page ninety-eight, you would find um one of three compliance reports that we issue. Um and this this one on page ninety-eight is our report on state compliance. And on page ninety-nine, you'd find all the state compliance requirements that we audit, and you can see the EPA funds are are listed there um as well as the the GAN limit calculation. So um these are all requirements that are very specific and unique to the state of California, ones we know dearly, ones your finance group knows dearly. Um and you'll see that we issued a clean opinion on that, we actually had no findings as it pertains to the compliance with state regulations. If you were to move to page one oh one of the PDF, you'll find the summary of our audit results. And what this does is it summarizes um the the opinions that we are required to render um in accordance with the uniform guidance, and that that is uniform guidance is applied to to um organizations that receive federal awards. So you'll see, this is what I kind of call it the report card, one-page summary of our results. And here you'll see, I mentioned we had an unmodified opinion on the auditor's report, which means your financial statements are materially accurate. Um but we did have internal control findings. Um we had a material weakness, two material weaknesses, um a significant deficiency internal control over financial reporting. Now, um we did as well last year. And you will see a comprehensive comprehensive corrective action plan that was that is included in this document in subsequent pages that was submitted, and you'll see there's progress. And in fact, components of the finding that existed last year were were actually self-corrected. So um although there are some some findings and some 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 items on the surface look like repeats, there there has been some incremental improvements in the last year, so this isn't a a roll forward or a copy or paste. Um but 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 we did find items and we did have 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 such findings. And then on the federal awards, um you'll see that we also had a material weakness um as well as significant deficiencies, the material weakness is over. Some of the expenditures that were identified for some of the new COVID block grant funding from the state. Uh management um had identified that and has subsequently amended reporting um in terms of what they considered allowable expenses, so. Um and then significant deficiencies related to the um uh uh compliance with some of the student financial aid awards that the district manages. So you'll see a a a few findings related to that. And again, the corrective action plan is comprehensive, establishes accountability, and and like I said, we we've seen pieces of that implemented um in in the fiscal year already, fiscal year twenty-one. Now, we we didn't um again, we we aren't engaged in the twenty-one audit yet, so that is all kind of informal anecdotal feedback, but um the the corrective action plan does lay out some specifics. Um and so we we've seen some of those already. So with that, I'd I'd be happy to entertain any questions the trustees or any other attendee might have on the audit results.
There will be uh quite a few. Do I have any trustees that are ready with their questions? As of yeah, okay, trustee trustee Handy? And the trustee Bonia, so trustee Handy, trustee Bonia, I'll go last.
Okay, my question, I hope it's a quick one, you just you just made up, you just alluded to um audit findings that had to be um redone regarding the COVID expenditures. Where can I find that in this report? Is there a specific area or could you clarify what you meant by that?
Very good, yes. So on page I want to point to them, I'm assuming everyone has electronic documents, so I'm trying to turn to the PDF page number. I I for some reason have a manual, so if you were to turn to page one hundred and eleven of the PDF, you'll find um the the components of that that finding, and I I think if I were to point you to a paragraph or two that might sum it up, it'd be the condition context paragraph about a middle of the way through the page.
I'm looking at that, okay.
So um you know, the COVID, you know, the HERF funding, the the CARES Act funding, the COVID block grant, all of it was very new. And 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 this is, you know, we've had other districts that have had findings similar to this. And so the district had identified, the district had allowable costs, it's a matter of taking credit for the right ones and reporting on on the ones. And so so there are underlying costs that are allowable that will be reported and amended reporting will be done. Um so I I I, you know, you know, I don't know how the state or or regulators will will view the finding per se, but in my experience, um if we're able to amend the reporting and we have underlying costs, generally checks aren't written to return funds in those environments. Um but but again, you know, this is all very new for everyone, so um I'd hate to, you know, I'd hate to um say that with with certainty, but in my experience, that that tend tend to rectify the the issue.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Trustee Bonia?
Yes, um thank you for that overview, um David, that was very helpful. But my question really um is is um through the board president to the chair. So we see that there are some year-over-year findings um and that um some of these repeat findings are very familiar to us and deal around um systems and controls that were brought to us by way of the FICMAT study. And so it's concerning for me when I start to see some of the same issues arise through this audit that were raised in a FICMAT study nearly two years ago. And I get so and what I really appreciate um on this is that I see that there is always a uh view or a reference to the corrective action plan. And so it's really, you know, the Chancellor and and Board President not meant to answer this today, but I would imagine that the board would expect that this document serve as an action plan, as a guide to the district being able to create an action plan, bring that back to the board over time so that we could see um evidence of some of these findings being addressed. And I think that's really a critical piece for me, is that this report is not a report to be shelved. This is a report to use as a guide to be able to address some of the year-over-year findings and some of the deficiencies and some of the challenges. And I expect, and I would think that my colleagues on the board would expect that there is a plan that is brought back to the board on how these findings are addressed. Timeline, evidence, um expectations and outcomes. And so that is something that I will be referencing uh every board meeting when we have an opportunity, because as we talk about whether we're building a budget, whether we're talking about enrollment management, whether we're talking about vision for successive students and those outcomes, they're all tied to this audit and how we are uh overseeing from the perspective of trustees on our fiduciary responsibility in terms of policy adherence. It all lies in this document. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee Bonia. Uh trustee Whitrow, I believe I saw your hand.
I I did have it up and then pulled it. I I like the comment that our auditor stated that it was a relatively clean audit. And um this is a very complex organization, very complex collage of laws that override what we do and how we do it and all of that. And um so I just want to pass on my congratulations to all hands that were participating on the job uh again in a in a difficult environment. That's number one. Number two, uh I agree with um trustee Bonia that um first of all, we need to use it as a as a platform to uh for the future to clean up what areas we do need to clean up. But I, you know, the two hundred pages or whatever it is to read, it it's the sort of thing that is a an educational tool. There there's just an awful lot in there that to make alive what we do, how we do it, and how it affects financial. And so uh I think it's, you know, for the trustees as well as our constituents. It's not the sort of thing to throw away, we're done with it, this particular meeting. Uh it it's a um it's a very important tool. Thank you.
Okay, I think it's my turn, I believe trustee Handy, that is a latent hand raise. So I will, okay, alright, so um my my comments are gonna mimic a little bit of what trustee Bonia had said earlier on. Um and that has to do with the words that I've come to absolutely hate. Um and they are that we are lacking in internal controls, that we do not have proper closing procedures and processes, because this has not just been since two thousand nineteen. For some reason, for fun, I was looking all the way back to two thousand two, two thousand three, two thousand four, and it is the same words that are reappearing over and over and over again. I think, which is one of the reasons when the district had done a self-assessment of the FICMAT, we had actually asked, I think the board had asked and and really asked quite a few times for the evidence in terms of internal controls, and this was prior to your time uh Vice Chancellor, I'm sorry, prior to your time, interim Chancellor Walter. We had asked for the evidence for those specific things, and so I guess my question through the Chancellor to you, uh David Robidek, is in your opinion, what is the most effective way to actually get effect or internal controls shaped um in such a manner, because we've always had a corrective action, but clearly we have not been able to ground it? So that and the same things that are reoccurring, which is the proper closing procedures and the processes, because we've got to get to the point where we stop talking about a corrective action, but actually get it done.
And so I just, you know, I'm a little bit up with, you know. Yeah, I I I, you know, in in watching, following management build the corrective action plan, there there's certainly thought that's put into the corrective action, that the the question is you you know, how do you give it, you know, you give it legs, right? And and you know, we and I look to the PCOB environment a little bit, because you know, they they, you know, they have you know, strict strict guidelines and requirements around internal audit functions and follow-up on corrective action plans, and they have, you know, I might I might miss the terminology a little bit, because I don't live in the SEC environment, but it's um, you know, it's define and then um, you know, accountability and then verify. So if if we were to take the, management's gonna take the corrective action plan and and we've, you know, we've designed and defined what we need to do, then it's then establishing accountability, which which is in the correct and then the verification. So it's the sampling of the corrective action periodically throughout the year by someone independent of those functions to to verify that it's that it's implemented. And and you know, when you have a longer list, um and I'm not suggesting that, I mean, I've seen longer lists, but you know, but but anytime it's not a one-z, two-z scenario, you know, prioritization is required, because sometimes um if you try to do all at once and you don't have the resources, so prioritization of them, and there's some low-hanging fruit in some of these. I know, you know, material does not sound good, but there there are pieces of this that are high in magnitude, that are that aren't volume transaction, right? So so I think, you know, there's some, but you know, the other part of it is we're in March already, right? So um you you know, some sometimes you report on findings in your nine months through the year, so how much time do you have? You know, before you can fix it. The other thing, and I just a practical matter, um you you know, I've been working with, my my very first client out of out of school is a community college, you know, in in Milwaukee, Wisconsin, if you will, and you know, and I've worked with several and 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 large ones that have, you know, seven or eight city college districts, and um in my experience, the the tug and pull between you know, decentralization and centralization always kind of exists, you know, there's a benefit, you know, to to centralization in 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 terms of policies and procedures, but then you you can lose some autonomy and some of the the things that are a benefit to some of the decentralization. So I know that in my experience, um you know, um you you know, particularly with grants and areas, you know, um you know, the 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 trade-off between, you know, um you know, decentralization and centralization persist. And so anytime, the more decentralization you have, the sometimes the harder it is to have common practices and policies that you can monitor across all campuses. But but there's a lot of positives for 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 those kinds of management styles and campus styles in terms of decentralization. So I don't want to take away anything from that, but um um in my experience, sometimes those environments, instituting policies across the board and uniform practices and documentation can be you know, more challenging than if if everything was shipped down to district headquarters, if you will, and everyone had to follow the same same format, same 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 policy.
If I mean, what I'm hearing then, as a possible possibility, since we're already in March, as you were saying, that it might be good to actually do a sample, so at this point, expectations that we've we've implemented some of the corrected actions. Therefore, it might be good at this point in uh knowing that these are problems, right, you repeat findings. Um so presumably, there's a possibility, so there might be a way to start doing samplings now from an independent consultant auditor or something.
Yeah.
In real time.
Yeah, yeah, you you could you could look through the list, say there's ten of them, and you you probably tell pretty cool, these are probably gonna repeat, because we haven't really implemented correct, you know, as opposed to like struggling over things that we already know or know as, right? It's focusing on the ones you can fix, so. Um but yes, it doesn't mean that they have to, you have to delay the corrective actions, means that there's some realities to the timing of this that might, you know, might get in the way of having a a clean audit, if you will, next year, or or they're all they're gone, right? You know, um but that being said, there there is, you know, some of these items that we identified June, July, you know, that it is just reported now, so so you know, there are there are some pieces of these corrective actions that have already happened or in process with. So I don't want to say, you know, that all is lost with all of them, it's too far in the year, but you know, just to be realistic about about timing. Now now that being said, there's some comments about some of these have been gone, you know, been reported for for a few years, so I don't want to suggest that that all, these are all new, but but that's it, yes. It's the um, it's taking the corrective action plan, turning it into a living document, establishing accountability, not only in implementing the policy change, but then someone independent, it could be internal audit, could be could be someone in a different functional category, it it could be us um to to go through and and sample and verify, and then that's what needs to be reported on to to the trust. It's it's it's, once you get to the point of verification that it's in place and and reporting on that um as you move through the year is 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 what I found to be a best practice.
I really like that. Okay, um I think that that gives us something to bite on. Thank you. Uh trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Thank you. I've appreciated the elucidation from my colleagues and um from David, thank you. Chancellor, when might we expect a report back from you with a calendar for a corrective action plan? Not the corrections, but benchmarks, milestones with dates that we might say, yeah, this is what we're shooting for. When would we hear back from you with that? Oh, thank you, trustee DPUN. I think that that's a great question. And given where we are and with um CLA beginning the audit already for the next year, um I'm thinking and thinking about what the what the repeat findings are and so on, we could probably put together a plan uh and a report-out schedule and bring it back. Probably, I'd say, maybe the middle of April, first part of May.
Probably I'd say maybe the middle of April, first part of May. And that's, that's only two or three board meetings from now, in case you were thinking about that. Yes. Because as, as David said, a lot of them are already in process. But I do agree that part of our issue has been, you know, we're going to go on a diet. Oh, my gosh, are we going to, you know, and it's tomorrow that I have to get on the scale and a year has gone by. So, and we've also, we've got our internal auditor. And she's been working closely with the team. And so we could ask her, and she's really good, to put together that plan and bring it back. It wouldn't be very difficult to do, and she could be engaged in this process. So I think it's excellent to, to think about bringing that back sometime in April.
All right. Thank you very much. We'll follow up in agenda setting, I'm sure.
Right. And I'll, I'll make a note of it, too. Yeah.
Okay. Do we have any more questions in the queue? Seeing none, I believe we move on to roll call. Adam Burkirk?
Hey, student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Trustee Withrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Abstain.
Okay. And trustee Gonzalez, you win? I'm sorry, trustee Gonzalez, you win?
Yes.
Okay. Trustee Napoli Bellarice?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
I would like to say one thing. I would like to seriously and deeply express the gratitude to David Robidek and the CLA firm for working with us, a heavy lift in a shelter in place, all of the interviews and the testing done virtually. So please let your folks know that we are really grateful for you and thank you for your report and helping us understand where we are. Appreciate it very much.
Will do. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. It's very, very clear. It was helpful.
Let us move on to the second action item, 9.2, consider adoption of resolution number 20 slash 2124, supporting award of the design build agreement for the Laney College Title IX locker room renovation project to Rodan Builders Incorporated. Could that sentence have been possibly longer? Okay, thank you, trustee Withrow. Second? May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Jenkins. Discussion? Seeing none.
I have, I have a question.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yeah. So can we get some context for this? Because the locker room renovation project has been ongoing for at least the past year and a half. So I'm really confused about this $8.4 million design build project. I have no idea what this is in comparison to the locker room renovation that, as far as we know, this Bordeaux's has been going on for the past year and a half. So if we can get some clarification on that, that would be great. ABC Smith?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. The first part, the first part of this project that you are familiar with, that was first brought to the board, was the bridging portion of this project. And in order for us to do the design build and to bid it out as a design build. So we had an architect engaged to develop the specifications, to work with the end user stakeholders, the college itself, to give the parameters of what was expected in order to develop a design bridge criteria. So now we are ready to go into the actual filing of the project and building of the project. So this is the very end of the, not the very, the beginning of the end of this project.
So this is the beginning of the end of this project. So were we provided with this design build? I, I, because I don't recall seeing a timeline that included the $8.4 million as part of a phase two or a part of the next step. So was that provided to us when the original project started?
It probably wasn't explained well that the initial engagement of the architect was the bridging architect. So that's part one of this particular design build project. So part two is the engagement of the design build team. Also on the, let's see, Stan Wong is the project manager who, who was in line for questioning earlier. If he is still available, he may be able to speak to the schedule. But again, we first started with part one, and now we're into part two of the actual design build of the project itself.
Half promoted Stan Wong, if he wants to speak. And so when I look at the attachment on this, which is a three-page document, I'm, we don't see scope of work. We don't see, I'm sorry, maybe I'm looking at, yeah. All we have is a three-page document that does not provide us with scope of work or any other, anything else that gives us information about this project. It, it seems that this, this is not something that we've seen in the past with such thin background information for $8.4 million.
Excuse me, trustee, there are two pieces to this approval. First, it's the resolution itself that describes.
Oh, and then you have underneath, that's right, and 9.3 underneath. I'm sorry. You do have the resolution. I'm sorry. So I did look at this piece here. Do we have a timeline that's associated with this? And or do we get to that on the next item?
It may be in the second item. I was hoping Stan Wong was still in the queue.
I'm still here.
Oh, great. Stan, can you speak to, Stan Wong is the project manager. He is with Swinerton, and he can speak to the project schedule.
Okay. So the project schedule is, the, the way this works is the, the first thing after award of the design build contract is that the architect for the design built entity, the team, is going to go through and do design. And that's going to take run through probably around October of this year. So construction to, sorry, probably around July of this year. And then sometime around October, the demolition and the actual construction would start on the project and be completed by the end of 2022. And this is all outlined on the bond spending program that the bond manager has put together a comm. So this is part of the allocation. So I don't know whether, I'm pretty sure that was probably shared at some point, but this is one of the projects on the bond spending plan. And as Atheria was saying, that this is to enable the design of the project and also then going into the actual construction. So it's a team, the design build entity under Rodan Builders, who is the contractor and SVA, the architectural team. So they're teaming up together to do this project. And that is the design and construction for the renovation, the Title IX project that's going on for the locker rooms at Laney.
Um, thank you for that. So I did go through the second set of documents earlier, and I still didn't see a clear timeline associated with milestones and completion. And so it's, I'll, I'll stick with the first with 9.2, which is just the resolution for this design bill contract. I, I still have, there are lots of questions that are unanswered, even when I get to 9.3, but I'll, for the sake of argument, I'll just end my comments there on this particular item.
Trustee will be happy to come back with a, with a more detailed timeline for you.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions in the queue?
I have a quick question. What's the total project budget for this? Is this the entirety of the budget for this particular project? Or is this the budget for phase two?
This is the, the budget for phase two.
And what was the spend for the first phase?
Stan, can you speak to that, the total budget?
Uh, the total budget for the bond spending plan is $10,00974. And of that, there was a fee that was paid to the architect, and I believe it was like $130,000 for the bridging architect. And that is within the total project budget. There's what we have called, you know, the hard, hard and soft costs. So there's other costs for things like furniture, staff time, things like that, that all go into that. The bond spending plan number, the budgeted amount, which is, you know, the $10,00974.
So this is a pretty significant project. So I'll be looking for that timeline along with my colleague trustee Bonilla. Thank you.
Okay, sure.
I, I do have a question. So was the architect, the bridging architect, Taylor, design?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And I, and I'm looking back at a proposal that was given to us where they discussed closeout. And the closeout is June of 2020. So the closeout, and I'm not obviously familiar with the nomenclature or the vernacular of construction, but the closeout that they were referring to in their schedule that was supposed to be completed by June of 2020, that is a closeout for the bridging? Is that correct? Or is that the closeout for the whole project?
No, that was the closeout for their scope of the work. So their design work was to be completed by 2020.
Okay.
And.
Um, I, I'm, and I'm wondering where, where the board is in terms of needing additional context? Or how are, I guess we could take a vote if there aren't any more questions as to what you'd like to do here, if you feel like you need a timeline, if you need more context, or if we are in a place where we are comfortable. So if there aren't.
Through the, through the, through the chair, what I would say is that that we need regular updates by way of a timeline. This is a Title IX project. It meant that this was a federal compliance issue that this district has been dealing with for quite some time. I believe that we are behind schedule and that we've had to get special approvals to be able to get to the place where that we're at now. The board has limited information about this, and I do believe that there are liability issues that are tied to this. And there's a significant presentation that was attached to us, to this document, right on the next, the next item, which is a 33-page slide deck that has an insurmountable amount of evidence, but it almost means nothing to us as we look at it independently. Because there's, there's, there's a lot of information on here that, that needs to be deciphered and that the, the, the board needs to be walked through. So this is a significant project that we need to be able to lift out and highlight for the trustees. And I think through the chancellor, I think, you know, Atheria Smith, you're, you've got all the pieces of the puzzle here. It's just making it make sense for us, for the trustees, and bringing it all together so that we see the project management taking place that needs to take place over a period of time and that the board is clear and the board is made aware of what the timeline is and whether we're on track, whether we're on track timewise, whether we're on track budget wise, whether we're on track compliance wise and compliance on all levels, including, we're not going to get into it tonight, but including our project labor agreement that oversees that this, that this project performs under. So this is one of many projects, but one that is definitely highlighted and elevated for me because it's been an ongoing process. So I have no idea like how now, how to gauge where we're at. Are, are we nearing completion? Are we, it, it looks like we're a long ways, and I'd like to at least start to wrap our heads around what that is.
Understood. And yes, the PLA is applied. The existing PLA that's in place is applied to this project.
Yeah, we, yeah, we know that they're always applied to all of the projects because they're supposed to be. Applying, appliance and compliance are two different things though, right? So we will, we will make sure that we circle back and get information from you. So I really appreciate both Atheria Smith and President Reese for kind of just allowing me to have a little more discussion about this because it's a, it's a major project.
Of course, absolutely. Trustee Gonzalez, you ended, I missed you earlier. My apologies.
Okay, I've just been listening and really appreciating the thoughtful questions and input from my colleagues and responses from staff. I think the challenge is, is sort of twofold. One is that, that, that cover reporting, you know, documentation is, as my colleagues have noted, is a little out of context. And so we're wanting more information. There's a lot of information there, but it's hard to figure out where it's coming from, et cetera. So we're asking for information. I think it's clear, but I want it to be really explicit, obviously, that when we are interacting with staff and staff says, oh yeah, we'll come back to you, that of course is only with the direction of the chancellor. So I think we all understand that. But for anybody else watching, trying to figure out what is this board doing, I think it is very clear that we are operating through the chancellor and the chancellor direct staff. So let's be clear on that. And so then now the question that I have in terms of timeframe, I'm hearing a number of you ask pretty urgent kinds of contextual questions. And so the question I have is, if we don't vote on this tonight, what in fact then is the consequence? Is this something that our board colleagues feel sufficiently dissatisfied about? That we would get a stronger consensus among all of us by waiting? And if we did that, would it have some unexpected and unacceptable consequences in terms of the timeline? We brought this back in two weeks with different information. So I'm trying to determine that in figuring out how we vote, what we do here.
You know, I am going to defer to Stan about the impact for the two weeks if we come back and how that's going to impact this project. So Stan, in your, your schedule.
Yeah. Every, you know, two, two weeks that we delay is two, two weeks on the backend that we have to add in terms of completion time. And the, the only risk that we'd be running is that we, we can always do things on the project schedule to try to compress things to pick back up the two weeks. But, you know, it, it's taken a while in terms of getting the project, you know, designed and approved and going through. So just be aware that, you know, they're on the bond spending plan, we need to finish the project by the end of 2022. And that, that is something that we'd have to work with in terms of, you know, picking up the time that we lose every two weeks that we delay that, whether it's the next meeting or the following meeting.
Thank you, President Reese. We have a comment that we need to bring in from Dr. Bestkoff on this matter.
Thank you, Chancellor. Our vice president of Student Services, Vicky Ferguson, also serves as the Our Vice President of Student Services, Vicky Ferguson, also serves as the Title IX Coordinator for the college. And she is beholden actually to providing an annual report to the Office of Civil Rights. And basically, it has, as part of the requirement, it includes updates on this project and how it's coming along. Obviously, you know, I think everybody understands the compliance. Additionally, at Laney College, we certainly want to have, you know, a women's athletics program that, you know, that 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 is equitable in nature and really supports student learning and student achievement. But in addition to that, I wanted to pass along this very important reporting responsibility we also have to OCR.
So if I may follow up, then what I'm hearing is that it's two weeks. It's not like, oh, we missed this two weeks and then it trips a wire that throws us off by months. It's not like there is some critical deadline that this two weeks is going to hamper. And so I'm wondering, Chancellor, whether you would feel comfortable allowing your staff to come back and help my, our colleagues feel more comfortable casting a vote here on such a large project? Or whether you feel that there is some greater urgency on this matter?
Thank you so much, VP Gonzalez UN. Given what we know in this district and given where we are and knowing what we've just heard from Stan Wong, Dr. Beskoff, and ABC Smith, and the concerns of the trustees, I think it would be very prudent to come back with a schedule, a plan, as been asked, in two weeks. That would be my preference. Because as you mentioned, it is quite a large investment. And if we don't do it in that way, then we run a level of risk. And so, I'm sorry, Dr. Beskoff, do you have another comment to that? Because, you know, if, if, if what Dr. Beskoff is saying and we need to hear is that if we delay a decision for two weeks, that it's going to put us in trouble with the OCR, then you need to state that explicitly. If it is not, then I think waiting the two weeks is the prudent direction.
So what I'm understanding is we will have to report this delay in the timeline. But.
But does it actually delay the timeline overall? Or just, does it two weeks push the timeline or does it not impact it at all? See, so, so for me, I'm hearing the concerns and I'm hearing, yeah, so I would, I would say we should wait. ABC Smith, thoughts?
If what I'm understanding from President Beskoff, that we continue to report and we report that in, also, it looked like Natasha had a comment. I'd like to also get Natasha's input in because I do have a final comment on that.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead.
Sorry, Chancellor. The college has had a long, has been attempting to comply with OCR's requirements for a long period of time. So while, you know, two weeks feels short in a period where you're already kind of seeking OCR's, you know, you've, we've apologized many times for delays on this project. So to the extent that trustees do feel comfortable enough, considering this contract at this time, knowing that you have staff's commitment to bring back the schedule very quickly because it, it already is, is exists. And we can report to this, to the champ, to the, I'm sorry, we can report to the trustees even between the meetings through correspondence from the chancellor to provide the, the information requested and then to report at the, at an April board meeting on the scope and the timeline of the project. It would be beneficial for Laney's compliance to see this project move forward with all haste.
Thank you for that, Natasha. That was very, very, very helpful. I believe that we have one person, trustee Handy, did you, is that your latent head or is that?
Yeah, from what I'm hearing now is that people had more questions than the materials that were available. But it's our responsibility to go through our chair and chancellor and get those questions answered ahead of time if possible. And so I don't, I don't have an objection to this. I don't know if all of us have an objection for this, but what I ask is we know the consequences of our inaction tonight, the impact it will have on the colleges, but what will change in two weeks? If we voted on it two weeks, if we voted on it tonight, we're still moving forward with the projects. We will just have more information. And if, and if there's information that we need to change down the line, then we will do so. But I'm not seeing, because what we're talking about is information. The project is moving forward. We're already in the middle of this project. So we should have gotten done our due diligence before because that's part of our procedure. And then we could have had all those answers tonight. So I'm just not seeing the benefit of delaying because of additional questions. Because we're still going to be continuing with the, with the projects. We will just have a better idea of timelines and all, and all those other things. So we're going to put the college through a situation where they have to do yet another explaining for the lateness, and we're already behind. So those are my thoughts as I hear all of the discussion taking place.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Okay, I think that we can go to a vote then, I believe.
So through the chair, what I, so I, I personally was not looking for this item to come back at any time. What I was looking for was additional information to come back. And what I've heard through this conversation here is that we are in active contact with OCR and we are providing information, specific information to OCR that I don't believe has come to this board. That would be critical and crucial information to bring back to the board. So if OCR is being told about timelines and expectations and, and compliance with this Title IX project, that's also information that I think should come back to the board. So, and those are the critical pieces that I'm talking about. There are critical elements here that need to come back to the board in full. We need the full picture because we know, I know, having dealt with this for the past two years, it had very limited information about what was taking place on this particular project, which I thought was completed. So this is news for me as a trustee, sitting here, learning that we are just beginning phase two. So there's lots of, there's lots of gaps of information that need to come back. Moving this forward tonight, I think is critical, it's crucial, it must move forward. I think that's what I'm hearing. But what needs to come back to the board is even more important in terms of the information that the board needs to ensure that this, that this project is indeed moving forward at the speed that it should. We do not need to, as I heard earlier, send another excuse, update, or request for an apology from OCR because we can't seem to move a compliance project forward, which is critical. So I will leave my comments there and I want to make sure that this information comes back. So this does not get lost in translation. I don't know if we need to make an amendment to ensure that a full report comes back to the board in two weeks. And I don't know who the maker of the motion or the second is on this item.
I, I believe, does, Maysha, could you tell us who the first and the second are in this item? Because that is possible that we could do a friendly amendment.
Yes, the motion was paid by trustee Whitrow and seconded by trustee Jenkins.
So my friendly amendment would be that on the, that we would ask the board to come back in two weeks with a more complete picture of this particular item with all the different elements that were raised today, including the report to OCR.
Trustee Whitrow, trustee Jenkins.
Just point of clarification. I agree with what I thought trustee Bonilla was saying. It seems to me that we need to pass this, but then give additional guidance to bring the information back to the board. And if that's the amended thing, the maker of the motion, I'll accept that.
Yes, that's great. Thank you.
Trustee Jenkins, do you accept the friendly amendment?
My amendment accepted.
Okay, all right. May we vote all or are there other? I think, I think we're all landing on the same page. The twisted paths are the same goal. So let us, let us vote if I have no objection to that. All right, Madam Board Clerk.
Yes, student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins. Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Okay, trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez UN.
Yes.
And trustee Napalia Bellarice.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. 9.4, consider approval of classified personnel items. Motion. Thank you, trustee Whitrow, second.
Second.
Trustee Bonilla, discussion. If there is none, shall we do roll call?
Okay, student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez UN.
Yes.
And trustee Napalia Bellarice.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a, I have a question. Did we not, we voted on the resolution 9.2. Did we vote on 9.3?
Did I skip 9.3? Thank you, trustee Bonilla. We have now, I have now inadvertently reordered the agenda. May we go to 9.3?
Motion.
Thank you, trustee Bonilla, second. Second, please.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez UN. Discussion. Okay, roll call.
Okay, student trustee Yaroni.
Yes.
Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Delphine Polk.
Yes.
Trustee Bonilla.
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez UN.
Yes.
Trustee Napalia Bellarice.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. 9.5, consider approval of the draft chancellor's profile to commence the search for the next chancellor of PCCD. Motion.
Promote.
Second.
Thank you, trustee Whitrow, trustee Gonzalez UN, discussion. Oh, okay, I see trustee Handy and I see trustee Bonilla and trustee Gonzalez UN. Trustee Handy.
I'm sorry, yes.
Oh, are you, your hand is up?
No, it's not. Oh, it's in there. I'm sorry, no, actually, it shouldn't be. I don't know what's going on there.
Okay. Ignore your hand. Let's go to trustee Bonilla and then trustee Gonzalez UN.
Thank you. You know, overall, I think it's a it's a, it's a good job description, but it is missing one significant component for me. And that is the board goals. And so the board goals that we adopted, I give, think, give a very clear vision and a clear sense of priorities that we worked very, very diligently on. And so I'm missing that essence from this document, from this job description. I'm, I'm okay with everything else in here. I just think that, 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 that element is critical for me and the work that this board did. And I think that needs to come through in some way on this document. And that would be my only suggestion. Thank you.
I, I, any discussion on that, I think that that is workable. Let me go to trustee Gonzalez UN.
Yes. Trustee Bonilla, I fully agree. And so I think there's probably a quick fix. And that is if you could draft language or staff could draft language that simply referenced familiarity with commitment to board goals as established. And then by reference, that becomes incorporated into the document without having to go and dig those all out and embed them in. So thank you for that thought. The thing that I wanted to say was that what I really liked in this document was a commitment to values and to values embedded in certain kinds of processes. The commitment to team building, the commitment to cooperation, the commitment to amazing communication. That kind of a commitment, I think, would be helpful because I think in this district, we have all of the resources we need. We just need to be able to coordinate ourselves better. We don't have real conflicts of interest. And I think to the extent that we have a leader who understands that and can help us get there as a district, we'll do better. So that's the part of this document that I actually really like. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Too. I don't see any other trustees in the queue. Okay, seeing no more discretion. Remember, this is the, this is the item that has both a timeline as well as the chancellor profile.
Point of order.
See any other discussion? Yes, go ahead, trustee Gonzalez.
So I invited an amendment, though it's not my motion. And I'm wondering whether the board would consider a quick amendment that would reference the board goals that we worked really hard on and incorporated that language in. Something, I'm just going to counsel, if you could assist us here. The gist of it, or vice chancellor or chancellor, the gist of it is that somewhere in this document, in terms of the qualifications required for this position, the desirables, our commitment to and an understanding of the board's goals and assisting the board in reaching those goals, something along those lines and referencing the specific document. If we could amend this so that we trusted staff to draft an appropriate sentence that would incorporate that sentiment into the document, then I think it might meet trustee Bonilla, Bonilla's objection, concern. So could I ask for that as an amendment? And if.
Something we could do, absolutely, that if that's what the board.
So I'm asking for that as an amendment from the maker and the seconder?
The maker of the motion, I'll accept that as an amendment.
Thank you.
Trustee Gonzalez UN was the seconder.
So I seconded it. All right, I will accept that. Thank you.
All right. Thank you both. Let us then vote, roll call.
Okay, student trustee Yaroni. Trustee Whitrow.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Handy.
Yes.
Trustee Polk.
Yes.
Trustee. Trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez-U N?
Yes.
Okay, and trustee Napolea Bellarice?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
Thank you. We are at reports, board of trustee reports. I will go down or up my tiles here. Trustee, our trustees, trustee Whitrow?
I'll pass. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Whitrow, trustee Bonilla?
Yes. So I just want to take just a couple of moments to, once again, thank all four colleges, your board presidents and your teams for a congratulatory and very successful I S R review. So that was really incredible. I also want to thank all four college presidents for your updates. I look forward to them constantly. Your written reports or newsletters that you provide to us are always packed full of information, and I really, really appreciate the information that you all provide there. And what else was I going to say? Hold on. I had some notes somewhere. Oh, I wanted to thank all the tenure, the six tenure faculty. Congratulations. I missed your celebration earlier today. It's so weird, right? Like, the last time I think we did this was we were physically there. There's always like some big cake and there's always lots of other types of desserts, and I oh, 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 so miss that and can't wait.
Miss cake.
Yes. I never thought I would miss going into that district office, let me tell you all. I miss it so badly. And I miss all of you. See, I miss being able to see you physically. And so, yeah, we're making some headway, right? You know, the, the whole COVID vaccination thing is just really interesting and, you know, some supplies are short and some supplies are going up and you were, we're just like in this yo-yo, but there's like definite progress happening. It's like organized chaos, and so I'm loving that. I also just wanted to share that I was able to participate on the exit, I don't know what else to call it. I think it was called an exit interview with the ACC JC folks. And I was able to just jump on, it was very quick, on the Laney college, just as an observer, and it was just amazing to see Dr. Luster and her team, and there was lots of them too. I think I was really surprised at how many folks there were on that team. And just the accolades, and I'm sure every single college had the same sense, because that's what I'm picking up from the rest of you, but of course, I only got to attend Laney's. And let me share with you something that, I hope this is okay to share, something that Dr. Luster had said. And she said, quote unquote, well, quote, "The love that we feel from Laney is palpable," end quote. And I was just like, that's amazing, right? I mean, all this done virtually, and she's talking about the palpable love that she felt from faculty, from just everything that I think we as trustees feel. Whenever the college presidents talk and you beam through, and we hear, we hear the students come forward, and all of that, you all somehow, through these little tiny squares on the screen, conveyed palpable love of everything that you do and emanate from your colleges. So I just wanted to share that. I thought that was amazing. Thank you.
Thank you for that, trustee Bonilla. Trustee Handy?
No, nothing new.
Trustee Diana Delphine Polk?
Yes. I, hello, good evening. I know it's late, so I'll try to keep it short. I moderated a panel last week on the Latinx COVID, Latinx COVID response, along with staff members from the Unity Council and the Native American Health Center to talk in particular about disparities of COVID within the Latinx community in particular. And we had a really great discussion. We had about 30 people come, which on Zoom is a lot. And so it was a really great conversation around the, you know, highlighting disparities within the Latinx community with regards to testing and to vaccine access. Several of the panelists were actually Peralta alums, so I was really excited to be able to see what some of our students are going on to do, doing really great work in the community on the, in particular, on behalf of the Latinx community. So that was great to share resources and to kind of just highlight the disparities within this community in particular, Spanish speaking as well as indigenous speaking, access to vaccines, testing, et cetera. So that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you for that. See, Delphine Polk, trustee Jenkins?
No, for me, thank you.
Thank you, trustee Yaroni?
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee, trustee Gonzalez-U N?
Good evening. I'll try to make this fast. Trustee Bonilla, I really appreciated your words just now. They reminded me that it's nice to be together and even when we struggle, there's something very humanizing about that. Over the next three weeks, we'll be wrapping up our term down at DeAnza, where I've been working on a statewide civic engagement initiative. Some of you have heard me talk about California Campus Camp, and we've got three more sessions that we're doing. And it's actually just been extraordinary working with statewide leaders on civic engagement training for students and others. So I'll just say, this week, we've got a program called The Union Makes Us Strong, and it's all about the civic engagement internship trainings that faculty unions are doing in Los Angeles, at Fidel DeAnza, and in San Diego. So if you care to join us, let me know, and I'll send you this, or you can screenshot it. And then the, the next group we've got, from CCSF, who brought us Free City College. Imagine if we could do that in the East Bay, get voters to approve free tuition for our students, all of them, anyone. That'd be amazing. And then the last week, we've got Stephen Kudor from the S S Triple C, the president, along with the president of FAC and the president-elect of FAC, just talking about the future of civic engagement, opportunities and cooperation between faculty and students in California in the coming years. So I invite you to join us, and, sorry I took so long. Thanks.
And I will, in the evening, by just saying again to all of the presidents, all of the staff, all of the faculty, the chancellor, all of the administrators, brava. Thank you. Thank you for all the work that you have done. You guys are amazing. And you didn't just have one visit, you in essence had two visits, right? Two ACC JC visits in a matter of a month and a half. So you're, you're all incredible. To that, I will adjourn, have a wonderful evening, and thank you all very much.
To clarify, President Reese, we're not adjourning the meeting at this time. We're returning to closed session. The meeting will be adjourned after the report out from closed session.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're not adjourning. Trustees, I will see you soon.
And I have to make one quick announcement before people go. Please remember, March 25th, Peralta Colleges Foundation March Madness Virtual Spring Event and Auction, where you give us your money, a race towards building careers. Show up, spend liberally. We know where it's going. Thank you.
Okay, we will return.